Call the meeting to order, City of Laredo, regular council meeting. Council chamber, it's 11th and Houston Street, Laredo, Texas, 78040, July 21st, 2025, 5:33 PM. I will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One minute silence, please. Thank you, may be seated. Mr. Secretary, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Honorable Mayor Dr. Victor D. Trevino?
Present.
Honorable Councilmember District One Gilbert Gonzalez. Honorable Councilmember District Two Ricardo Ranquel Jr.
Present.
Honorable Councilmember District Three Melissa Sigarroa. Honorable Councilmember District Four Ricardo Rick Garza.
Here.
Honorable Councilmember District Five Ruben Gutierrez Jr.
Present.
Honorable Councilmember District Six Dr. Tyler King.
Here.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and District Seven Councilmember Vanessa Perez. Honorable Councilmember District Eight Alisa Sigarroa.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, let me make a motion to approve the minutes of June 16th, 2025 and July 4th, 2025.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We'll proceed with citizens' comments. Do we have any general citizen comments?
Mayor, if we may, may we postpone the citizens' comments until 5:45 when they have an opportunity to sign up until 5:45 and proceed with the recognitions.
Second.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Mayor, if I may, can we bring the recognition of 99?
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
All right.
All right, we are going to start with recognitions. First recognition is Javier Peña, former Chief Customs and Border Patrol Officer for his contributions and service to the City of Laredo. Peña, congratulations.
And it gives me great pleasure and this recognition to this individual that has served our community in many ways, but during this 25 years, he very protected our country and did it with a sense of duty and professionalism. Chief Peña started his career as an immigration inspector on the Department of Justice and then in 2023 moved to the Customs and Border Patrol, CBP, where the Department of Homeland was created. In 2006, he was one of the four CBP officers that started the Trusted Travelers Enrollment Center, better known as CENTRI. Then was promoted to supervisor and then in 2029, he was promoted to chief. Chief Peña served in several capacities while at CBP, he has served as manager and the paroles of humanitarian manager and also as the political liaison. All of this experience came in handy when he along with other senior leaderships where our government leads as one of the one-of-a-kind COVID-19 pilot program on international bridges that we use as a template and took to other ports of entry. And no other program came close to this level of empathy and coordination. And for this, we provide this certificate of recognition. Mayor and City Council hereby recognizes Javier Peña. In recognition of Javier Peña, for the Chief Customs and Border Protection Officer for his contributions and service to the City of Laredo, congratulations. Counsel? Muy buenas tardes. Es un placer. I'm very honored to be here, Javier. The relationship between the sister cities of Laredo and Nuevo Laredo is very intense. For several border crossing issues, approval from CBP office are required. We have good coordination between the Mexican consulate and CBP office headed by Javier Peña, de Legor, who had been very complicated during the six years I have served as Consul General of Mexico in Laredo. Javier Peña was always an official who not only applied the law, but also understood the dynamics of the bilateral relation, which facilitate the implementation of multinational actions in trade, civic events, official visits, and most important, health cooperation. Javier Peña was indispensable supporter in the successful implementation of the border cross vaccination program, which under the coordination of the Mexican consulate and the participation of partners from Laredo and Nuevo Laredo vaccinated almost 300,000 people at the Juarez Lincoln and Columbia Solidaridad International Bridges. Dear Javier, thank you for your lovely support in strengthening relations between two cities and two countries, which are friends, neighbors, and strategic allies. Enjoy your retirement. May God bless you.
Chief, a couple of words, please.
I had written something down and I'm looking at all the people here, so I need to get going. I don't want to, I have written like six pages of. On behalf of myself, I'm humbly accept this recognitions. It's not only myself, but it's attributed to the leadership that we have here at the Port of Laredo. Our Port Directors and Assistant Port Directors are here. And of course, I can go without saying, my family, my wife Gracie, my son, my daughter, my son-in-law, daughter-in-law, and my grandkids. It wouldn't have been possible without them. My career has, was, had ups and downs, but more, most importantly, most importantly, there were ups. And I thank you all, I thank the city. I think the city does a great job, management, management. I think I've known each and every one of you through, through work. And I still have my number, so if anybody needs something, please call me. Again, thank you so much.
Doctor Arjona, if you want to say some words, please.
Buenas tardes a todos, a todas. Es un honor estar aquí y compartir con grandes personalidades y sobre todo contigo Javier, nuestro estimado Javier Peña. Gracias por tu profesionalismo, entrega y profundo sentido al deber, el cual ha logrado ser un gran puente de confianza y cooperación entre nuestras comunidades. Nuevo Laredo no tiene más que agradecerte por todo tu trabajo, todo tu empeño que fue más allá de tu deber al salvar junto con el consul, con el mayor Trevino, a tantas y tantas vidas, porque sin tu participación en el programa de vacunación transfronteriza no se hubiera logrado. Recibe nuestro reconocimiento como una muestra de aprecio y respeto de quienes valoramos profundamente tu esfuerzo, trayectoria, y calidez humana, que han dejado una imparable huella en nuestras comunidades. En nombre del gobierno municipal de Nuevo Laredo, de nuestra presidenta Carmen Lilia Canturrosas y sobre todo del pueblo de Tamaulipas, de Nuevo Laredo, de México, muchas gracias por tu trabajo.
Una foto aquí, una, dos, y tres.
Right over here with me, ready, one, two, three. Thank you. Can we have the family, please? Ready, one, two, three. Right here, three, two.
Una más aquí, y una, dos, y tres. Y una más. Una más aquí. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, if I, can we continue with the next recognition, the Laredo 9U? All right. Recognition, recognition of the Laredo 9U All-Star Crowned Undefeated Champions at 2025 South Zone Tournament in Portland, Texas on July 12th, 2025. You know, for starters, I have something to read, but let me just say something, guys. Where are the champions? Can I see the champions? Can you stand up? So let me read a little bit of history or a little bit of excellence that we have in Laredo. So, Laredo 9U All-Star Crowned Undefeated Champions at 2025 South Zone Tournament. Throughout the tournament, the team dominated skills, discipline, and hard going undefeated in every game. Their championship match was a nail-biting showdown against town and county All-Stars team from Tampa Bay, Florida. Wow. But Laredo boys rose to the occasion with one of the most exciting comebacks of the tournament. Wow. In the final game, the boys found themselves trending nine to 15, heading into the bottom of the sixth inning. With everything on the line, they railed with grit, determination, fighting back a score of seven runs and clinched a six to 15 victory. The crowd, the crowd erupted, finally run across the plate, sealing the team undefeated, titled, and golden finish to an unforgettable journey. The South Zone Tournament was filled with talent from across the country, but it was Laredo 9U's All-Star who rose to the top, prevailing themselves, proving themselves to be champions in every sense of the word. The victory is testament to the countless hours of practice, the leadership, dedication, coaches, and unwavering support of the families and communities. Congratulations to the 2025, 2025 South Laredo, South Zone Defeated Champions, Laredo 9U All-Stars. Guys, coaches, you know, I'm not really good, I don't like reading from papers, it's nothing, not my thing. You know, guys, you know, that's not really my thing. I'm really proud of you guys, you know, it's something that you guys did, your work as a team, you know, I played baseball, I never played baseball, I played football, but not baseball. But seeing you guys working hard, going all the way to Florida, something you guys don't know, you know, you didn't, you never played there before, they didn't know the fields, they didn't know how everything was going to happen, and you did it. And I'm proud, everybody's proud of you, everybody here is proud of you guys. So, congratulations. All right? The coaches don't want to give a couple of words? Coach?
Thank you, guys, for having us today, appreciate it. Not many words here, just really want to thank these boys and these coaches. You guys all know, y'all have kids that play ball and it's a lot of commitment, so we really appreciate it. These guys never gave up. They came back, what was it, 15 to nine? And we came back and won, 16 to 15? So they never gave up. These kids are really talented. You guys know how competitive sports are these days, but these boys are pretty good. So all I did as a coach was try to not mess it up. So, but thanks to all the coaches and these guys, super proud of them and hopefully there's more to come in the future. Thank you.
Christie, can we, I'm in front of the council member in the coat shells. Right there.
How do we get a hat?
See, got to be a hat. Right there. Right here with me, ready? One, two, three.
One more here. Ready, one, two, and three.
Right over here? One, two, three. We have one more? One, two, three. Perfect.
For the record, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Mayor Pro Tem Vanessa Perez.
98, yeah.
I have a motion to bring up number 98. Motion?
Second.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Item number 98, recognition of the Sunset Smokers and the dedication to our community, remarkable talent and on the grill, for their generous spirit, countless volunteer hours in City of Laredo events, and for the bringing joy and to the unity through the service. I'm sorry.
Sunset Smokers.
Let me just say something, I, you know, I don't really like reading about, you know, from, I like talking from the heart, that's the difference from me. What can I say about these guys? These guys worked so hard on Fourth of July, you know, not only that event, they did the Mother's Day event for, Help Me Out, the Mother's Day event, they did the Fourth of July event. That event was, you know, Fourth of July was crazy, we had a lot of people, you fed a lot of, a lot of our, of our people that helped us, volunteers. So guys, for that, I gotta be, you know, very grateful for what you guys do for our community. I know that we're expecting barbecue from you guys later on.
Yes.
I think, but not too much, you know, Gilbert's still eating some turkey legs from the last time, so congratulations on that. So let me go down there and give the recognition.
Thank you.
Also just want to acknowledge, I believe this team of grinders were out there in the floods, right, providing bourbon barbecue to the barbecue.
City of Laredo Mayor of City Council proudly recognize Sunset Smokers for your dedication to our community and remarkable talent on the grill. We thank you for generous spirit, countless volunteer hours of City of Laredo and events, and for bringing joy and unity through our service with serious appreciation, June 21st.
Gentlemen, ladies, thank you all, thank you for all your time, appreciate you all, thank you so much, thank you so much for all your time. Thank you.
Okay, ready? And one, two, three.
Ready, one, two, three. Thank you. One more, oh, two more.
Congratulations, thank you. Mayor, if I'd like to motion to bring up item number 100.
Motion, second on favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
That is also a recognition from Councilmember Richie Ranquel. 100.
So discussion with possible action and recognition of the Laredo Firefighter Union for the participation in the Texas State Association of Firefighters Task Conference and for successfully securing the 2027 task, what's that, Biennial, convention to be hosted in Laredo, Texas, sponsored by Mayor Pro Tem Vanessa Perez. Where you guys at? So, where's Mr. Gonzalez? Tell us a little bit what that means to Laredo and what's going to happen in 2027.
Hello? Yes, right, so, thank you, Council, Mayor. From what I understand, the Laredo firefighters, the City of Laredo never hosted the Texas State Association of Firefighters Convention. If they did, it was back maybe in the 50s or 40s. This is the 50th Biennio, and we didn't want to go and bid for it. It will be one of the biggest conventions in the history of the Texas firefighters. Basically means it's 100 years in existence. We were going against Lubbock, we had heard other cities were going to bid, as soon as we arrived though, we found out, I think on Monday, that most of the cities had backed out. It's not like we put on a good show, but. We anticipate close to 300, if not 300 rooms for a week. We are working with the CBB to tie it into the Sister Cities Festival, so that it commences, the Sister Cities Festival Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We will start our convention, people will start arriving on Friday, running through the week up till Thursday. We are trying to get the state association to go all the way through Friday. We do want to end it with a concert for the public and so make it a big deal for the whole week. Running to rough numbers with the convention visitors bureau, I'm sorry, my voice went out while we were over there.
Yeah.
It's on the lobby. So, we anticipate anyone from half a million to a million dollars coming into the city, from people coming in. We also want to show them a good time, so that we can maybe set up a reoccurring theme of bidding every, so many years, so that the convention comes back into Laredo. I know the city, the firefighters in San Marcos have done it before, they went a run of about three conventions in a span of a decade, just because the, the time they showed the firefighters. We did get a big welcoming, a big, big support by a lot of the firefighters, a lot of them are northern firefighters, this will probably be their first time to Laredo, and so hopefully we can make an impact in their lives, so that they can continue to visit Laredo. So, for us, it's a big issue, we have never hosted. Our local has tried to win the bid in the past a couple of times, and we were unsuccessful. And this time we weren't successful. And I thank the city, support the visitors bureau put behind us, support that council put behind us. We did go in, Councilman Ranquel did a great job. Most, most firemen there thought he was a firefighter, and so when he presented, he told them that just because he looked like a firefighter didn't mean he was a firefighter.
No.
That went out very well, it was a big laugh. And so we appreciate it, we already started planning. I do know our state association will be here August 25th, if I'm not mistaken, and so they're going to come in to go ahead and sign contracts with hotels and certain venues, so that way we're set up for two years.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So, you know, being there, I saw the unity of all the, you know, of how everybody came in, all the, all the members, all the union members, but not only the union members, all the firefighters across the state of Texas. It was something, that's something to say, that unity of brothers, they stick together, they, they take care, they take care of each, take care of each other, they're, they have a They stick together, they, they take care each, they take care of each other, take care of each other, they're, they have a bond, and they, they tell you straight out, that's my brother, it doesn't, they're, they're more close to their fam, to their, to their coworker, which is a brother from, from the firefighters, than they're, they're with their families. So, to that, it's, it's an admirable, and thank you for, for representing Laredo the way you guys did, everybody was excited. You know, every one of you guys did your, your part, went to, went up to every member from different parts of the Texas, you know, try to convince them, not convince them, because pretty much they were convinced, that of those days I saw them, you know, they were convinced, but, other than that, they were, you know, excited to come see, uh, when they, they asked for the vote, uh, to come to Laredo to change the venue for what, what they wanted to do, they nominated Laredo, they asked, they, they had a second real quick, and then, they voted, and the room, you should have heard the room and said, everybody said, aye, like, they're, you know, across, across the room. So, everybody's, they're, they're trying to come, they're excited, uh, we saw a lot of, we, we, we heard that there, there's gonna be a lot of, of people that are coming for the first time in Laredo, to Laredo. So, they're looking forward to finding, you know, bringing their families, uh, because they want to experience, like we said, the mix text, that, that Eileen said, that we have a mixed text culture in, in, in Laredo. It's not that text mix, it's a mixed text, so, hopefully, uh, hopefully we can, uh, give them that experience and, and, and give them that, uh, so they can go back and come back in next two years.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Item just before, gentlemen, just want to say congratulations, I heard over and over again the presentation you all put on over there, and it spoke volumes. The way cities backed out as soon as they heard the Laredo Fire Department was pitching for this. Um, I think it just shows your unity, how well you all performed together, what you all do for the city, how you represent us, and I commend you on that, you all did a phenomenal job. I heard it over and over again coming from over there, I was two hundred and forty miles away, or maybe even further. Um, so gentlemen, thank you for representing as well as you do, thank you for doing the job as well as you do, I can't say it enough, thank you gentlemen, and congratulations. Yes, go ahead.
Congratulations, gentlemen, I just have one question for you, and maybe there'll be time for this, but we'd like to know, you know, what you need from the city to make this successful, uh, as in the planning stages over the next two years, so.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, um, I just want to say congratulations also, and, um, kind of show that this is what can happen when you have good collaboration. I know that they, you know, I was talking to Randall about this a couple months back, and he brought up that this was gonna happen in July, and I said, well, we have the Sister Cities Festival, and, you know, it kind of just went from there, and it was like a, a good series of, of events, and I'm glad that we were able to help in your efforts. It shows initiative and leadership on, on y'all's end to, to want to bring this to Laredo, it brings tourism, it brings, uh, you know, all, all the good things that come with bringing people into our city. So, uh, really appreciate the initiative, Councilman Ranquez, thank you for going over there, I know it, it took a, a week of, of your schedule to be out there, and Eileen as well, Convention and Visitor Bureau for supporting the initiative, and of course, you guys, um, you know, were out there working as well. So, we want to thank you all for the efforts, I want to just show that this is a, a positive collaboration, and, and good things come when, when we work together. So, I want to encourage, and I second, uh, what Councilman King said, that, you know, whatever we can do to help, give, make this a good conference for the people coming to Laredo, and also thank management for supporting the efforts as well, and the rest of council too, so, congratulations, and we look forward to that.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, I want to make a motion to start asking administration, um, to start looking into, uh, collaboration, see what, how we can work, where, what is it, that we, we can help them out, how much we can help them out with. Starting off from right now, twenty-twenty-six, next year's gonna be a crazy year for us, I know many of us, it's gonna, we're gonna be really busy, but we can start off from right now, we want to, we want to, we want to give a good presentation. We want to give, um, a good positive vibe when they come down to Laredo, which I know what they're gonna have, but let's start working to find the funds and see how we're gonna, you know, work, uh, where, where we're gonna find those funds.
Motion and second, on your favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Really quick, I just want to also congratulate you all, I know, uh, I worked alongside, uh, Sergeant Longoria, which is the president for the Sheriff's Office, and with Mr. Avalos, which is the president for OPO, and they just dream about having this, they, they can't imagine, uh, having this venue on their, uh, entities one day here, so this means a lot to everyone in Laredo, thank you all so much, appreciate it.
Eileen?
Thank you, I did, Convention and Visitors Bureau, I just want to say, it was, uh, it was, for us, it was great being able to, um, assist, to help, to be there and support, uh, the bid for the conference. It was, uh, definitely a, a very intense, but really fruitful week, uh, for us, especially coming out of Sister Cities, but we're happy to support the, the conference, and we're happy to start the planning, uh, process for the twenty-twenty-seven that will be here before we know it. So, um, I think it was, it was a great opportunity for us, and, uh, at the CBB to do the presentation together with the, um, the firefighters, with Councilmember Ranquez, uh, with some more venues, we have potential venues for the conference, it's you, um, James Smith from the arena, uh, we're already, uh, starting the planning process for the, the conference, so we, we look forward to it, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Yes, and one more thing, also this is in behalf of the mayor, we give all the support, and thank you for representing Laredo, thank you very much. Let's get a picture.
Come on, Randall. At least one of you got to turn around. We're gonna show them how Laredo parties, or?
Okay, ready, one, two, and three. Perfect, thank you.
One more, ready? One, two, three.
Awesome, congrats guys, congratulations, great job. Mayor, if I may, bring up your recognitions, two and three.
Yes, motion?
Thank you.
Need a second, second, on favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion pass. Alright, number two. As amended.
Motion's amended, on favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Recognition of Mikola Gorecki for his musical, musical talent and contribution to the City of Laredo. I do want to say that this is a very rare instance that we get to honor people who come, have come to our community and have shared their talent with our community, especially as classical composers. Before I move into the background, background music of Mikola Gorecki, I have a video that I want to play a portion of sympathy, symphony to the public.
Mayor, if I may, I, I, we needed to read a little bit of his biography.
Um, Mikola Gorecki, in nineteen ninety-five, he graduated with distinction in composition, um, from Carowice Music Ac- Academy under the supervision of his father. In nineteen ninety-six, he benefited from two scholarships from the Band Center for the Arts in Canada. Um, in two thousand, he received the title of Doctor of Composition at Indiana University in Bloomington, and in two thousand and one, and two thousand and two, he taught at McGill University in Montreal. Um, he just got back, uh, as the mayor just talked about, from a Dukes label recording in Europe, and on Tuesday, July eighth, the Sicilian Philharmonic Orchestra recorded with the Dukes level, a label, rather, his first concerto for flute and orchestra, which you just heard.
Okay, ready, one, two, and three.
One more? One, two, three.
And if you could say a couple of words for us, if you like, please?
I just have a few words, first of all, thank you, our mayor, all the members of the administration, for that honor, uh, it means a lot to me. Um, I'm very grateful that my work was noticed by you, and I just don't want to take more time, because there was so many recognition today, and the music, so, let's maybe move on, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Family, with the family?
Okay, you ready? And one, two, three. I'm gonna take another picture. One, two, and three. One more?
I need to do one more.
One, two.
One more over here? Ready, one, two, three. Thank you, last one. There you go, two, three.
Mayor? Mayor? I just want to add a little bit to Dr. Gorecki's bio.
Go ahead.
His works, Dr. Gorecki's works have been performed many times at home and abroad, including Montreal and Edmonton, at the Lincoln, at the Lincoln Center and Avery Fisher Hall in New York City, the D Espressa Center in Amsterdam, and also the Festival of First Performances in Carowice Musica Polonica Nova Festival in Warklaw, which I believe is in Poland, and World Music Days in Slovenia, organized by the International Society for Contemporary Music. He is recognized throughout the world, and we are so privileged and honored that Dr. Gorecki has shared his talent with us here in Laredo and with our students as well. Thank you, Dr. Gorecki.
Okay. Next recognition honoring Executive Director Julie Bassan and her team at the Area Health Education Center for receiving national recognition for their outstanding service and impactful programming benefiting our community. They were presented with a Center of Excellence Award by the National AHEC Organization. For the public that may not be aware, Laredo has been a medically underserved community for decades, and the challenge to provide the critical health services to our community centers around, but not having enough doctors and medical personnel in our community, so the organizations like AHEC play a critical role and work to enhance access to quality healthcare, particularly primary and preventive care by, by providing a supply and distribution of healthcare professionals via strategic partnerships, partnership with academic programs, communities, and professional organizations. Julie Bassan?
Thank you so much. I want my team and the board members to come, please. Uh, Dr. Chamberlain?
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you so much, it's an honor to be here before all of you today and receive this award. Um, this is really something we're very proud of, because whenever we travel to other states, especially within our system of the National AHEC Organization, there is an AHEC in every state, at least three, and, uh, to say that we were presented with this award, a Center of Excellence Award, again, we are putting the entire city of Laredo and our community on the map in a positive manner, and it wouldn't be possible with the numerous partners that we have in our community that believe in our mission, that continue to support us, and the students that continue to benefit from our programs, thank you so much for everything. Um, of course, it wouldn't be possible with this, without these ladies here that are part of our team, and the board members to my left, so thank you to all of them, they deserve all the congratulations that you are giving us, thank you so much.
Mayor? Mayor? May I say a few words? So the award that the Mid Rio Grande Border AHEC Group won at the National Organizations Conference, um, last May, uh, last month, it is, um, it's important because there are two hundred and seventy-eight AHEC chapters throughout the nation. The Center of Excellence Award honors an AHEC program that exemplifies innovative, community-focused strategies to meet health workforce challenges and improve access to healthcare. Awardees highlight innovative program models, effective collaborations, significant benefits for their target communities, and clear measurable results. The award recognizes trailblazing efforts in any aspect of AHEC's mission, celebrating initiatives that raise the bar for excellence, partnership, and creativity across their network. So we are so privileged that our AHEC is so active in our community, and thank you once again to AHEC and the board members that are here.
Okay, let me take a picture here, one, two, and three. Thank you.
Let me even right here. Ready, one, two, three. Thank you. One, two, thank you. Three, two. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Good job.
Good job. Judge? Freddy, how's your judge?
All deserved. Absolutely.
Thank you. Item number 97, recognition of the Parks Special Events Crew on their remarkable hard work throughout the city of Laredo, especially during the holiday of July 4th, event at Independence Hills Park. The Parks and Recreation Department has done a tremendous job in preparing for large family events. This July 4th was no different. Even with having to split and prepare for the Pony Baseball Tournament, day in and day out, these crews maintained our parks and help in special events, so we appreciate their very hard work. Thank you all so much for what you do. I know it's always an annual sacrifice from not being during this holiday with your families, so it means so much to, you know, to the city and to the communities as well. Thank you all so, so much. I want to read the, you know, the names that worked for the record. The Special Events Crew that prepares setups and breakdowns, because you all are the first ones to get there and the last ones to leave. And even, thank you Coach for being with us this past year as well. You're there every year with us also. Thank you so much, Coach, for being there. It's Ramiro Ramos Jr., José Merino García, Ricardo Martinez, Luis García, Eduardo Chávez, Guadalupe Morín, José Bermúdez, Juan Dávila, Miguel Godínez, Miguel González, Pedro Mendoza, Ricardo Ramos, Roberto Vidalés, Daniel Hernández, Ricardo Rodríguez. Special Events Staff that helps set up the activities, sound system and other stuff, Ms. Nora May, Juan Muñoz, Blas Rodríguez, Albert Ramírez, and Mario De León from the El Edén Rec as well, plus numerous other part-timers from the recreation staff. Thank you all so much.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just real quick, Parks, you know, you always come on, you come on top. Gracias, thank you so much for everything you guys do. You work so hard from 5:00 in the morning until 12:00 at midnight, you know, working, checking, everything, everything's going. Ramiro, I know that you worked before, you know, everything, you know, calling us, seeing that our things are there and everything's set up for further July, so this further July was awesome. It was a great event. It was really packed, and everybody, they continue saying, "Congratulations," but it's not us. It's everything, it's just everything you guys do for the community. So thank you so much.
Mayor, Council, thank you for having us here. I'm honored to have the gentlemen behind me and ladies that are here, but right now in Parks, we're 255 strong with lifeguards and rec specialists and summer programs. We have a lot of moving parts right now, but it's an honor when you have gentlemen like these that will never tell you, "No, what do you need?" And all of a sudden, we need to go to three or four different places? Guess what? They'll find a way to get it done. And I've always believed that five pieces of six is prior planning prevents poor performance. If you see how these gentlemen work, every Tuesday, every Tuesday at 2:00, we have our events meeting, and we can sit down and we plan for the next two weeks, next month, depends how big the event is. And Mr. Merino, which is, Merino is the crew leader for the events, you go out and you see him in the backyard, he's got the trailer already set up with the chairs, the tables, and everything lined up, and you order that the event's gonna start, so when it gets there, you talk about efficiency, everything works out. So, you know, we're, that's, men like, ladies and men that work for us department is what makes the department kick, to help you all, to help the community, to help the government, because we're here to, again, we're here to serve the citizens, and it's an honor, and you're only as good as the people that work with you, and then these guys are, ladies are tremendous, and thank you, Councilmember, for honoring us and recognizing them, because like you said, we're here to serve you. They're the first ones to get there and the last ones to leave, but it's a tribute to their hard work and the kind of people we have here at the city. Thank you all.
Can we have some of you on this side?
You know, I also want to acknowledge that with this event, and of course, the one in Los Dos Laredos, you guys, this crew, and Christie, and Councilman Rangel, you made hundreds of families stay here loco and celebrate the 4th of July in Laredo. Thank you all so, so much.
We turn one, two, and three. Thank you.
Ready, one, two, three. Thank you. One more. Three, two. Thank you, gentlemen. Great job, thank you so much. Thank you for everything. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. Gracias, thank you, thank you always. Thank you for everything. Sir, gracias, thank you for everything. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Thank you, brother. Thank you, please, thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Mayor, if I may make a motion to bring up citizens' comments?
Motion, second, on favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passes. We have one general citizen's comment, Victor R. Santos Jr. See here? Victor Santos Jr.?
Yeah, well, I want to make a correction. It's, this is to express support to, I believe the item, correct, item is 25-1238. Sorry, I have to wait until the...
I'm sorry, what item is it?
It's 25-1238, and it's regarding the amenities, remodeling project.
Can you say the number of the item on the left side, like?
Dr. Tyler, it is 25-1238.
On the left side of the other page?
I don't have the generally, but...
Mr. Valdez? Number six? Okay, we're not there yet.
Yeah, it's public here, so I guess I should wait until the...
Yeah, go ahead and please wait till public hearing. Thank you. All right.
Want to bring up item number 89, 90, and 91. Second, on favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion pass. 89. Discussion with possible action on developing and approving a long-range marketing plan, possibly rebranding and master plan for Port Laredo to enhance its global competitiveness and any matters related thereto. And the reason I brought this item up was to make sure that we move into a new era of trade. Our global position and competitiveness will not only be because of our expansions and our World Trade Region-Colombia Bridge, but how we market ourselves with a global supply chain. So my opinion would be to instruct management to bring up a comprehensive review of our marketing and branding plans for our international bridges that may include the naming of our two new bridge expansions, and more specifically, our Colombia Solidarity Bridge, in line with the request from our trade partners in Nuevo Leon. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion pass.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank all the city council members for making always Nuevo Leon welcome here in this important office. Before I start to read the letter that Governor Samuel García sent to the mayor and to the city council, I just want you to imagine two important brands. Laredo as a brand, which names everything of international commerce and trade, and Nuevo Leon. Nuevo Leon, Laredo, Laredo, Nuevo Leon. I'm gonna read now the letter that Governor García sent to you guys. Dear Mayor Trevino and members of the Laredo City Council, I hope this letter finds you very well. It is with great respect and spirit of collaboration that I write you on behalf of the state of Nuevo Leon regarding a matter of mutual interest and shared significance, that Columbia Bridge, a vital gateway between our regions. As you are well aware, the Columbia Bridge plays a crucial role in facilitating trade, economic growth, cultural exchange between Nuevo Leon and Texas. It is a strategic asset that supports thousands of commercial vehicles daily, and strengthening our bilateral partnership and contributing significantly to the prosperity of both sides of the border. In recognition of the bridge's increasing importance and evolving economic landscape of our region, I would like to kindly propose a discussion about renaming the Columbia Bridge, the Nuevo Leon-Laredo International Bridge, Puente Internacional Nuevo Leon-Laredo. This name reflects the dynamic and forward-looking vision and relationship between Nuevo Leon and Laredo. It embodies our shared vision for growth, innovation, and cooperation could serve as powerful symbol of our commitment to strengthening this corridor as a leading economic and cultural link. We believe that such a change will not only honor the bridge's critical role, but also enhance its identity on the international stage, underscoring the unity and the strategic partnership between our communities. I look forward to the opportunity to discuss this proposal further with you and the city council. Together, we can ensure the bridge name resonates with the spirit of collaboration and progress that defines our bilateral relationship. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Please accept my best regards and warmest wishes. Sincerely yours, Governor Samuel García Sepúlveda.
Sorry. Do you have a question?
Yes. And thank you, Mr. González, for that letter, and as someone who does take la gloria to Monterrey with my family, I want to thank you and thank the governor for finally constructing that highway that's been promised for all these decades. So, and I'll say that as someone who is married to someone from Nuevo Leon, I very much like the idea that you've brought from the governor. I would ask, you know, management and legal, what would be the process if we wanted to pursue that? What would that take to even consider it?
The renaming, councilmember? We've done some preliminary research, because Chief Nadine had proposed that for us to do. It seems like right now it would probably take legislative action, which would require us to wait till the next session, however we can start the process.
Or perhaps if there's another special legislative session, we could get it on... They had 18 items this time. Add it to the next one. But, okay, understood. Thanks.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Is there a financial impact for us changing the bridge name? The financial impact?
There should not be. It's just a matter of getting it done. Because we, like, for instance, you're reading highways, there's no impact. It's just getting the right legislative action.
So we have a recommendation for the new name, but I think it would be something that this council should probably have a meeting on to throw that name around and consider that and see if that's the new name that we would want it to be. And, because I definitely understand having Colombia in that name doesn't really reflect the Nuevo Leon part of it. I can respect that. So I think it would be something that we should definitely have some discussions on and proceed forward, but it's a good start to the conversation and definitely appreciate bringing the proposal forward. And of course, we're always partners, so we're looking to work together.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I think one of the questions was also, is it named the same on both sides? What are the requirements? Do we just go with naming it on our side the same name as their side, or are they independent? Or does one structure, the new structure, have a name and the old structure stay the same? So these were the discussions that needed to be had by the council.
All right, and you're right, this is subject to discussion, and the information that we provided, thank you very much, and give us our greetings to him. This is something we will be discussing, and those concepts of what it's going to be either or, or unanimous on both sides. So we'll go ahead and form the committee or discussions to bring that up.
Thank you, Mayor. And anything we can help, we will gladly help you guys. And also, I want to thank you. We don't have anything against the Colombia name. Colombia is a little, small town of Nuevo Leon, but it has been 34 years that has passed, and a lot of change has happened on that border. So renaming the border will give us an identity, which we put Nuevo Leon, which is the most important state of Mexico, together with Laredo. So it's a win-win situation where both of us, we're gonna win.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question to Mr. Zon. Mr. Zon, well, let's say that we changed the name, you know, after we go through the process, is it gonna affect the expansion because the way we did the application on, you know, for the expansion of the bridge, because we did it for Colombia, it was all together? So is it gonna affect, you know, the application, or would it affect it anyway?
No, councilmember, it should not, so long as we show, you know, how it's done and that is still a continuation of the same. So it's not like you change the name, you have to reapply.
It's a new name, so...
It's just the application, and thereafter, there's a name change. We make it clear.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much for bringing this up. I think we all understand the growth that's happened in that area, and the dynamic growth that you've undertaken there with all of the infrastructure investment that Nuevo Leon has put into their side of the Columbia Bridge. So I'm excited to see what we could come up with and to see this forward, and Mayor, if you need volunteers for a committee, I'm happy to serve. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
If I could add something?
Go ahead.
Also, I want to invite all of you. The 31st of July of this year, the Columbia Bridge, it's its birthday. It turns 34 years old. We're gonna have on August 8th, an international bilateral economic summit, which is gonna be a year tradition. Every year, there's gonna be this summit going on between Nuevo Leon and Laredo. It's gonna be with a different enfoque. We're gonna give it a more of an international trade and business between Texas and Nuevo Leon. We're gonna have el 8 de agosto. It's named the first annual bilateral trade and economic summit, Bernardo Reyes, and of course, Tomás Sánchez de la Barrera. Tomás Sánchez de la Barrera, you know who he is. I don't know if you know who Bernardo Reyes is. Bernardo Reyes was the governor who was in Nuevo Leon, who was the guy that envisioned that Nuevo Leon should have a border, and he was the one that exchanged the land with Coahuila to have that 14-kilometer border. So I think the name, Tomás Sánchez and Bernardo Reyes, work together very well. So I think the name Tomás Sánchez and Bernardo Reyes worked together very well. They both have the same vision of bringing those two regions together. In that summit, there's going to be three panels, which are very interesting. We are inviting a lot of businessmen from Texas, from Austin, from San Antonio, big league people that are interested in Nuevo León and that are interested in Laredo. The three panels, the first one is going to be involving poor Colombia-Laredo infrastructure, what has to be done on both sides of the border. The second panel is the Corredor Económico Nuevo León-Texas. In that panel, we're going to have most, one of the top businessmen from Nuevo León and businessmen from Texas working together and detailing the importance of the relationship between Nuevo León and Texas. But the last panel is the one that I like the most, and I'm sure you guys are going to like it also. It's called the 255 Corridor, Plan Maestro Binacional, which means what do we have to do in Nuevo León and in Texas, particularly Laredo in that area, which is Laredo, is 78045, the same ciclo, to develop that 255 corridor as one of the future most, I'm even excited, the most well-planned logistic center between Nuevo León and Texas. We have the opportunity to do it together. There's not going to be any more chance to do it. So that panel, I invite all of you to be involved. We're inviting the landowners of all the 255. They're going to be present there and they're going to be talking to us of how they plan to work together with the city and to work together with Nuevo León so we can make this happen and to make Laredo flourish and flourish more as it already is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Mayor, could I?
Yes, go ahead.
I want to introduce somebody else to do as well to on our side, so Felipe Romero. We're going to keep this brief, but I really want to introduce you, our new asset. And I let you know back in April 20th that Felipe Romero has officially joined our team as the executive manager, department formation lead. He's right now, he's currently reporting through Ms. Castillo, the Economic Development Department Director. Felipe brings extensive expertise in strategic communications, branding, and marketing initiatives. In this role, Felipe is tasked with designing and establishing the city's external marketing department. His responsibilities initiate, include developing the department's foundational structure, the goals, and the operational policies, as well as coordinating closely with our internal departments, our regional partners, and our external stakeholders. He will begin initiating the branding and outreach strategies aligned within our economic development objectives upon successful completion of creating our department and everything. And he's pulling double duty right now, and that's why I wanted to make sure I get to show him off a little bit. But through this, and once he gets through this assignment period and pending the favorable resolution of some other conditions, Felipe will transition into the role of our marketing director. And we look forward to his contributions. I will tell you, he's an Energizer Bunny and he's been working really hard at the remodeling or the infrastructure adjustments that we're doing. So what's happening with the Nuevo León Bridge, the Nuevo León-Laredo Bridge, whichever side you're on, I guess, this is going to work right directly into this whole direction of this shift. And so I just wanted to make sure I introduced Felipe to you all personally because he's been here a while, he's been working behind the scenes a lot, and I just wanted to show him off a little bit tonight, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Nab. Felipe Romero with Port Laredo. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a, you know, I want to go ahead, if you don't mind, give a strategic update on what's been going on behind the scenes. It's been just over two months since stepping into this role and what I'm presenting tonight is an early look on how we're rethinking marketing at Port Laredo. This isn't the finished product. It's really a runway. And the reason we've been able to move so fast is because of the strong foundation that was already here. My job was to listen first, align second, and start building a system that matches the scale of the port's ambition. And this slide deck, which I'm going to go really fast, walks through the first 60 days of alignment work, the early signals of momentum, and some directional goals that we'll continue refining together. To start, I want to go back to one idea that's helping ground the voice of everything that we're building. Let's be clear, this isn't just a nice quote. It's our market position. Trade doesn't just move through Laredo, it begins here. And if that's true, then we need a marketing and communications strategy that starts with the same clarity and ambition. This perspective reframes how we talk about the port. We're not the end of someone else's supply chain, we are the origin of trust, speed, and opportunity. The port is the launchpad. The way we present Laredo to the world needs to begin with confidence, alignment, and strategy. Because Laredo isn't a pit stop, it's the starting point, the first handshake in the supply chain, the first mile in this modern economy that we're creating. That is the lens we're applying to every message, every campaign, positioning Port Laredo not just as a crossing, but as a catalyst. And in order to start that shift, we needed to get our internal house in order. Clarity before creativity. Before I made any changes, I took a page from the Honorable Mayor's own playbook, Diagnosis Before Prescription. So I started with a wellness check, a full brand audit to understand what was strong, what was scattered, and what was missing. This gave us the clarity to move forward strategically, not reactively. But from there, I developed a total alignment strategy rooted in internal listening tours, peer benchmarking, and citywide goals to unify our outreach and communications under one cohesive system. And that led to the development of Port Laredo's first formal brand architecture, a flexible but structured blueprint that guides how we show up visually, verbally, and strategically across all of our platforms. Now, I didn't come up, I didn't come in and flip a switch. I launched small pilot campaigns with visuals, short-term videos, and bilingual messaging to test and learn what resonates. This approach led us to build momentum while staying adaptable. I also introduced the Port Marketing Advisory Group, or what I like to call the PMAG, a cross-department advisory body that ensures alignment between the bridge, airport, economic development, and our CVP tourism, all under the city of Laredo umbrella. And finally, we began developing a long-range marketing plan, not a finishing document, but a drive built for refinement, input, and ownership from our city council and our leadership. With the backbone now in place, we moved from planning to execution, and that's where some of our test campaigns began to come to life. Once we diagnosed the gaps, the next step was the structure, and that's where brand architecture comes in. This is how Fortune 500 companies manage complexity and consistency in their messaging. Each campaign under Port Laredo, whether it's Moves the World from Tera Fuerte, Hot City Cold Chain, and now Sin Límites, what I have in front of you, is part of a unified system. They're not siloed efforts. They reinforce each other and ladder up to our larger economic mission. Sin Límites is a civic engagement campaign. It's about pride, it's about identity, and it's about reminding young people, business owners, and international investors that the future doesn't pass us by, it starts here in Laredo. This is also where messaging starts to evolve, away from just moving goods toward moving futures. This tone is critical for attracting talent, investments, and broader public support. Each of these assets that you see, the paper planes and the trucks, are metaphors for ambition and scale. Even the smallest player here can cast a global shadow, and that's the message we're projecting. And while civic pride is one pillar, the next campaign zooms in a clear economic opportunity we're ready to lead in, cold chain logistics. Hot City Cold Chain is an example of how we're translating infrastructure into brand power and ultimately economic development. This campaign spotlights one of our most under-leveraged assets, our cold chain logistics. We're not just keeping produce cold, we're innovating binational logistics between our partners, CVP, and the private industry. And we're showing that Port Laredo is built to handle extreme climates while being extremely precise. This campaign positions Port Laredo as a key player in the global food safety, pharmaceutical integrity, and binational inspection modernization. And now, let's look at how this messaging strategy extends beyond visuals into the stories that we're telling now, the data we're tracking, and how we're building Port Laredo's narrative strength. Frontera Fuerte is a strategic storytelling platform. It anchors our message in legacy, binational strength, and community pride. This campaign speaks to everyone, from investors to residents. We're showing the past and the future of Port Laredo, historic crossings, current infrastructure, and cross-border collaboration. So how do we measure all of this work in creating momentum? Let's take a look at what the first 60 days have set in motion and how we're aligning short, mid, and long-term impact. What you're seeing here is not a final product, it's the foundation. This slide illustrates how we're gone from scattered efforts to a structured, aligned approach. From brand audit to strategy, now onto investment-focused campaigns, the base of the pyramid reflects what we're already done: brand audit, stakeholder input, and launching internal systems. The mid-tier is where we are now, the pilot campaigns, the audience growth, and the brand applications across touchpoints. The top of the pyramid is where we're headed. These are the aspirational goals, the kind city council input can help us sharpen. At Port Laredo Trade Summit, we're also proposing with international campaign visibility and global investor-facing outreach. These are ideas, not deliverables yet, but I want to make sure we align this trajectory with our city council so we can grow smart with feedback without overpromising. And we're not building fluff here. We're building a brand ecosystem that earns investment, trust, and attention. And lastly, I want to zoom into our digital reach because it's a pulse check of how Laredo's beginning to show up and grow online. As part of our foundational efforts, we rebooted Port Laredo's digital presence. We didn't just post, we built the strategy behind every channel. We launched Instagram in Q4, just in April. We're seeing healthy, organic traction. LinkedIn has become our strongest performer for reaching trade and civic leadership, and Facebook has been revamped to align with more craft channel presence. This is a pulse check. The real story is not the follower counts, it's alignment, trust-building, and credibility. And this is the foundation, is what's going to allow us to amplify our campaigns going forward. And with that said, I'll open it up to council.
All right. Great job, by the way. Great job. Very good, thank you. And I think that's one of the things we have been talking about, the marketing department. I think this is a good step forward, and I think we have only good things to show and to create. So congratulations for that position, and we hope, if you need anything, we're here to help.
Thank you, sir. It's 20 years in marketing communications, and I left 20 years ago from the School of Alexander, and it's good to be back home.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we've had, I've known Felipe for a long time, and I know that his intelligence and his background in this position is not only going to provide us with the traction that we need right now, but it is also, in my mind, my conversations with him is how we interact for the rest of the city's departments. You're laying the ground, the foundation for the port of entry, but it has to be attached, in my mind, to everything across the board that we do. And I think you're the man for it, and I appreciate you being here and welcome home. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I just got to say, Mr. Nab, first time I see somebody coming up and start throwing information around, so I'm sure, Romero, good job, sir.
All right. Go ahead.
I'd just like to recommend that we have a sit-down with him on this new renaming issue and kind of evaluate the proposed name and see if there's 100% consensus on our side, maybe a workshop sometime in September, October-ish, around there, after everything. So maybe we can throw out some dates and come together with a meeting where we can evaluate. And if he could maybe bring some ideas forward, then we can consider.
I think that can be set up.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Also, I want to add, if we can, Mr. Romero, start looking for, you know, maybe a brand, not a brand, just everywhere you go, you go to, like I say, I'm not trying to compare, but it's like you go to New York, it says the logo, I Love New York. You go to San Antonio, you have TSA, and they have all these logos. Something that you can, you know, I wear the Laredo pride everywhere I go. But when we went to the conference and they saw the, they said La Union and said Laredo, everybody called us Laredo, so hey, Laredo, Laredo, Laredo. So it's something that we start showing the community out there or other cities that we're the number one port of the United States, but let's show, and let's have a brand, not a brand, but a logo, say, I wear that logo, I'll buy that shirt, you know, so they can take it anytime, like a souvenir when they come to Laredo. All right?
Thank you. All right, I think we have a lot of ideas going back and forth, so I think it's a good idea to have a workshop or some kind of, to throw these ideas around, and he can be present too, to also give us some input. All right? All right, we'll proceed with Renitey. Discussion with possible action on the toll-fee study and any matters related thereto. Sponsors, Mayor Pro Tem, Vanessa Perez. The reason that we brought up is to see what the status with our toll study is and having discussions and possible passage, if appropriate, with enough lead time to give our industry enough time to participate. This is the reason for this item.
Mayor, if I could, I've just got a very brief report on that, just bringing everybody up to date with what we've been working on. But for those that may not be aware, that we have been working on long-term financial system. We've been working, conducting the toll study for the city's international bridge system. Right now, we are slated to have the study work completed, the analysis and everything completed, in time to start the conversation in September. But the study is evaluating the current toll structure, the future infrastructure investments, and the system's financial contribution to the general fund. As part of the analysis, we are also reviewing incentive-based pricing structures that encourage the crossing during off-peak hours. This supports the goals related to the traffic management, air quality, and trade flow efficiency. We have been developing, we did this study in-house, and so finance, budget, all of our bridge, all of our departments have been working together with the input on this thing. We are preparing the recommendations that align with the resources, the service impact, the strategic priorities, and so we are right on track to have it ready. I believe that one of the questions I would have for the council is that the intent of what we were going to do is that we were going to complete the rate study, do the first presentation to the city council first. Then we would go and talk to all of our stakeholders, our strategic partners, the port of entry and such. If you're comfortable with that stage, then we will prepare accordingly for that. But I really thought that the council should see the information first as to why we built the analysis the way we have. We have looked at, we have looked at making the adjustments in one swoop and just taking care of it at one time, or doing in a phased-in approach, because I believe that's exactly what you're talking about with the industry. It's better to phase it in and allow as we, as we look at what our future analysis is as to what's happening on the border, we can make those adjustments as we go. And so rather than just one time across, I think it is better on a phased approach. But you're going to have both of those packages to be looking at as to what we need in order to keep everything solvent, keep everything fiscally responsible, and then on the other side, we'll show you a path of how to get there in the most delicate way. And so if that's acceptable, you can, you can plan on it being here at the first meeting in September, and we will make it a full presentation at the council meeting. And then from there, all I'm asking is let us go and then talk to all of our stakeholders, let us get the information out so that we can make sure that everybody can at least have, share their ideas on what information we've been putting together and involve themselves within this conversation.
All right. I think it stands to reason that we need to give a lead to the industry. We need to be aware of what we're thinking and why we're thinking it. It stands to reason that things have to change. I mean, they can't stay stagnant. We have duties to do to refurbishing our installations and everything that goes along with it. So yes, bringing that study will be good. All right. Any other questions? No, all right. We'll proceed with number ninety-one. Discussion with possible action in integrating House Bill twenty thirty-eight through Laredo Health to help Laredo's medically underserved challenges attributed to physician shortages and any matters related thereto. A reason this was brought up is to be able to highlight the importance and critical need for making sure that we continue to address our severe medical under-service. Because we can build all the hospitals and medical facilities, but without doctors and medical personnel, they will remain empty, as we see often. When I came back to Laredo, we were medically underserved, and now I'm still practicing medicine in my seventies. We're still only having a third of the doctors that we need for a community our size. And now we're facing an even bigger issue with some of our older primary care physicians wanting to retire. So the passage of this law will provide one more tool for the use of the city's binational muscle to bring in more physicians to help us out. And if they choose, they can stay here and become part of the American story. Also, we have already started having discussions with our partners, medical schools in Mexico, and we'll be moving forward to having our residency program become part of that discussion. I have Dr. Chamberlain here to go over some specifics on how this could proceed and how the city can be part of this and participate, and maybe even create a public health rotation for our local residency program. But for now, I would like to make a motion to instruct management through the Health Department Director to work out a potential MOU with our residency programs and engage our partners in Tamaulipas and Nuevo León that we have spoken with. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Dr. Chamberlain?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Dr. Richard Chamberlain, your Public Health Director. This is a bill that we were following in public health as the Texas Association of City and County Health officials, and we're very excited as many jurisdictions are health professional shortages areas and medically underserved areas, and this will serve as a pipeline from these academic institutions who have tenured staff, or sorry, tenured graduates already come into our system. So I'll provide you a little bit of background and then, of course, the implications for Laredo and our plan of action. And so just to give a little bit more context, House Bill twenty thirty-eight, known as the Doctors Act, was approved via the eighty-ninth legislator and signed by the governor, June twentieth. This will be, this allows us to expand access to medical providers in Texas, and it becomes effective September first of twenty twenty-five. The purpose of House Bill twenty thirty-eight is to address physician shortages, as you mentioned, Mayor, just a few short moments ago, in underserved and rural areas, strengthening Texas's healthcare workforce, especially in health professional shortage areas and medically underserved areas, and a streamlined pathway for foreign-trained physicians and medical, recent medical graduates. Key features of the Doctor Act include provisional licensing for eligible foreign-trained doctors, limited licensing for physician graduates, non-residency, prioritizes underserved and rural communities, encourages integration into accredited health settings, and sets pathway to full licensure under specific conditions. Provisional license for foreign medical graduates, the eligibility criteria includes a medical degree from an accredited eligible school, a licensed abroad in good standing, completed a residency program abroad, passed the United States Medical Licensing Exam Step One and Two, English proficient and legally authorized to work in the United States, a job offer in a Texas healthcare facility, and passed Texas Medical jurisprudence exam. The practice setting must be an ACGME AOA or an accredited program or, and have affiliated sites. And so that is the accreditation council for the graduate medical education.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
How did the bill address visa status for people? That's often a big challenge. We have a lot of foreign medical graduates who go through residency, and they do fellowship, but then they need to basically find a special work visa to work sometimes. That's how sometimes we end, we end up with extra physicians, or physicians that we would not have otherwise been able to get in certain specialties because there's special visas for underserved communities, so would that apply here as well?
That specific language was not included into the bill, but that's something that we are looking to make that request to the state for clarification throughout this process.
Yeah, so we need to be a sponsor of some sort, otherwise.
Correct.
Because the residence, the sponsor is, it's the residency program or the fellowship program, but.
We'd still have to be connected to one of those programs, i.e. in this model that we have here, Laredo Medical Center gateway would be a pathway for these individuals.
Basically, these graduates or these physicians from other countries would essentially be working under the license of another physician, like already in Texas, for example.
For two years, correct.
For two years, almost as if, similar to a physician assistant or a nurse practitioner, but then after the two years, they would be able to.
Apply for full.
Yeah.
Does it say anything about medical liability insurance?
That is not specified in the bill as well, but these are all questions that we want to be able to provide to the state as we continue to move along with this process. With the renewal and conversion to the full license, renewal must, must be practicing in a health professional shortage area or medically underserved and hold the accreditation from their school systems abroad. And then the path to full licensure must pass the full USMLE requirements, no disciplinary or felony issues, and eligible for unrestricted license under board review.
Does it say anything about compensation? Is it fee-for-service, or is it employee of that entity that sponsors him?
It's the, it's the employee that sponsors him and sets the salary for the individual. So the sponsoring physician role must hold a full unrestricted license, board-certified in relevant specialty, supervises physician graduate under a written agreement, legally responsible for the care provided to the graduate, must be part of the same group or facility if delegating oversight.
Mayor, man?
Yes, go ahead.
I'll just comment a little bit on that, I think. Not, one of the difficulties will be that because, it's sort of like the horse before the car, the parlor for the horse. We have such a shortage of physicians, and then you're asking our overworked physicians to become responsible for training another physician, as if they didn't have many other things to do. And, and so I just, I think that this residency program that exists now, Laredo Medical Center, has been a godsend, and we have many more primary care physicians serving our area. You know, thank you, Dr. King, for deciding to stay, and that's really how you do it, right? You expose these doctors in training to communities that they see a need, and then they see the warmth of the, and the respect that they get from their patients. I think we can brag about that here in Laredo, that we do have kind of that special feature. But recognizing that it does put a strain on the existing physicians here, so if we're going to expand it again, it's just that, I'm glad that we're going to carefully plan it because you need to have those supporting physicians participate in the program. And that's going to require asking and recruiting qualified physicians to do that. And it's, it's going to be just, it's not going to be an easy walk. We have a need, but we can't ask or expect our overworked doctors to automatically come forward. We need to make sure that their needs are being met as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and another question would be, they have to be willing participants of being sponsored, they're not necessarily obligated to sponsor somebody.
Correct.
So that would be somebody that would be willing and have the time or expertise. And these are doctors that are already graduated and already went through a residency program. They're not interns or residents anymore. So the expectation for them is not to be guided like a resident. They already have, have their specialty. So I think that's one of the considerations, is that it?
Correct.
So that would be.
It's also the, the system, the ACGME system that would also have to approve this as well, so that would be the step one. Our conversations would have to go through UIW to request if they would want to take this on. Because without that step, then we couldn't move on to physicians that are in their system that would want to be a sponsor for this program as well.
All right, great.
And so the implications from Laredo, it would qualify, or Laredo qualifies as a medically underserved area, opportunity to recruit foreign-trained physicians, expand access during provider shortages, build bilingual, binational care capacity, and supports our workforce residency in our healthcare realm. And so the next steps for local implementation is identify the eligible facility partners, as we were mentioning first. So we do know that we have UIW here, and that would have to be a request made through them and for them to want to partner in this. If not, then we'd have to seek other methods, and that would push us back a little bit. We would prepare onboarding framework for provisional licenses, build outreach to foreign trade providers near the border. And then this is where we go back to what I was mentioning earlier, Dr. King. Engage with the Texas Medical Board and DSHS for compliance with all those little details that are not stipulated within the bill, and then monitor the rule adoption. So it's not fully complete yet with all these details. The rule is being drafted right now, and it'll be finalized on January first.
Right.
And lastly, the question is, how can we use this legislation to strengthen our local public health capacity, which is something that we just discussed right now? What operational partnerships are needed, as proposed by the mayor, reaching out to our colleagues in Nuevo León and Tamaulipas, of course, here on our side with the accredited school system, and then, of course, with the providers, and then the barriers that we anticipate is exactly what we just talked about right now as well.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Just, just want to say, we don't have to do any outreach whatsoever in Mexico or anywhere across the world for this program to become aware. There are thousands of applicants every year applying into the United States from outside. They will find out about this. So if we actually partner with ACGME, like the Reddit boards and everything, like, it will be, like, they're already aware of this Texas bill. They will become aware. It will, it will not be a lot of work to make people aware of this program if we actually can make this happen. And I'm guessing that, you know, so UIW, who has the two residency programs, they could kind of do this without the city, you know, like, they don't, we, this would be more like, tell me if you agree with how I'm thinking about this, this would be more like the city being able to possibly use this to add, you know, providers, physicians to the public health departments in as far as your own treatment of patients through public health, or you, are you thinking of it more within the community, or both?
Both.
Yeah. Okay, because once, once we get all through all those hoops, we'll be on a list somewhere that people are looking for. You know, so it'll be, you know, something that we don't have a struggle of getting applicants for. I firmly believe that. Although some of the requirements, like passing the USMLE licensing exam, steps one and two, those are very ambitious people that are going to pass both of those exams, because it's not to mention, it's going to be in English, it's not in their native language. So if they pass that, they're an extremely, you know, ambitious person. And they may all, they also, you know, may prefer the traditional residency pathway, so they're not as limited. But I still think it's something that we could draw a lot of people for, so thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mayor, also thank you for, for leading the charge on this. I think it's a good initiative and also partnering with Dr. Chamberlain. But my question is, does the motion include for us to work with McWilliams on this? I mean, we do have our lobbying firm that we could enact to help us do whatever we need to do to show that Laredo supports, and then I don't know if the motion also includes a resolution on our end that we could submit to the legislation. I don't know, I don't recall what exactly the motion was, but if it doesn't, I think a resolution from council in favor of the initiative by our legislators, showing a support and a need, especially that Laredo is so medically underserved, and then enacting the lobbyists that we already have on our, in our corner to help us do whatever we need to do to make our voices heard out there.
Yeah, and one of the things before we go on, we're a third of the doctors that have to be in a community this size. So a third of the doctors, that's very low. And a lot of the doctors are already aging, so that will diminish it more. So with that information and this bill, I think we should have some kind of support from, I mean, that's my opinion.
Patient-to-provider family medicine is one provider for every three thousand two hundred and ninety patients, which is triple the United States' ratio.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Just as a point of order, so I, I put my comment in the form of a motion, Councilman Don Head seconded it as an amendment to the original motion, so zone, would it be appropriate for us to vote on the amendment and then vote on the original motion?
Yes, you vote on it first, and then if it passes, then you vote on the motion amended, otherwise you go back to the original motion, yes.
Is that, if that's acceptable, Mayor, right?
Yes.
Mayor, do you have a question about the?
Go ahead.
So, Dr. Chamberlain, the deadline for all of this is in, or the next phase is in January, right?
When the official rule is adopted.
Do, do we need to maybe hold back or use this amendment to future cast as it develops, as we get the information that we need, so that we can make sure the resolution includes all the aspects of our community and what the legislature is looking for, to make sure it's tailored to that? Or do you think we're, we're fine and we're good to go currently?
The bill as it stands is, is the structure, the framework, so I'm comfortable with it going forward right now. It's more of the small little details as to compensation and shadowing, et cetera. That is part of that rule-making process that we can tackle then when it comes out. But I think right now, it would be wonders to put that together. So it also entices other systems besides UIW. I know we're all so tight for space and the ability for training grounds, which also dampens our opportunity, but I think it'd be great to push that out there, so the UT system could think about this as well.
All right.
Thank you.
I think support, support from the city will, I think, help to get them, their visas or their immigration status, whatever they need. Remember, where they still have to take the USMLE, United States Medical Licensing Exam, Part Three. They already need to have those Part One and Part Two.
To start.
So I think support from the city would, would help there.
Yeah, that's a nice, simple question. Right now, you just brought up an interesting point about, you know, the space and everything that we need. Can you prepare, or do you already, or did I miss it, on the, if there's any expense to the city on this?
On this, there is no expense to the city besides, of course, the background work that'll be conducted by the staff to be putting this together. But ultimately, to recruit, as of this moment, the city of Laredo couldn't recruit because we are not part of an accredited system to bring in residency programs to public health.
Okay, perfect. All right.
Mayor, as a point of order, I think we vote on the amendment and then the original motion.
Okay, so let's vote on that. The motion is there and has been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And not the original.
And now you vote.
Not for the original.
All right.
The vote has amended.
All right, vote as amended then? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mayor, anything to report on, under Communications for you?
No, I did all my communications.
Okay. Then I motion to approve appointments to commissions, boards, and committees with an amendment to number two to read as follows. Reappointment by Mayor Dr. Victor Trevino of Mr. Jose Cab, Ceballos, excuse me, as a chairman to the TERZ number one board with ratification effective twenty twenty-five, January.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Mayor, motion, open up planning and zoning, public hearing, and your doctor ordinances.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Be one through six.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Planning and zoning, public hearing number one, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo, Texas by authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for a second single-family residential detached lot, unlocked. Single-family residential detached lot on lots uh, eleven and twelve. Block nine thirty seven, Eastern Division located at seventeen oh two East Oakin Street. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed uh, conditional use permit and staff supports the application. Public hearing number two, an introductory ordinance amending the zoning map. The zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo, Texas. By rezoning the south forty-four feet of lots one and two, block twelve twenty-nine, Eastern Division. As further described by beats and bounds in attached exhibit A located at twenty-five fifteen North Malincha Avenue from. R R dash three, uh, mixed resident residential district to R one A, single-family reduced area district. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed chain, uh, of the proposed zone change, staff supports the application. Number three, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance uh, map of the city of Laredo by rezoning lot two. Block five thirty-five, Eastern Division located at ten oh two East Travis Street. From R three, mixed residential district to B three, community business district. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed zone change, staff does not support the application. Public hearing and introductory ordinance amending uh, the zoning uh, ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rez- rezoning lot twenty twenty-three. El Rancho subdivision, unit one located at forty-one oh one Picon Circle Drive from R one, uh, R three. Mixed residential district to B three, then community business district. The planning and zoning com- commission recommended approval of the proposed zone change and staff supports the application. Number five, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo. By authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for a second single-family residential detached site built dwelling unit. On lot eight, block fifteen twelve, Eastern Division located at twenty-five oh two East Frost Street. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the pro- proposed conditional use permit and staff supports the application. Number six, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ma- ordinance map of the city of Laredo. By authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for storage of flame flammable and explosive uh, products. Above ground fuel storage tanks on lot one. On lots one, two, three, four, five and six, block three, amended plat of Millennium Park located at eighteen seven oh two. Uh, comma eight eighteen seven oh six, comma eighteen seven ten Metropolitan Road and. Eighteen seven oh one, eighteen seven oh five, eighteen seven oh nine, World Trade uh, Center Loop. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed special use permit and staff supports the application.
Thank you, okay, thank you. Alright, this will be planning and zoning public hearings and introductory ordinance on number one.
Mayor, you have three public comments on number one.
Okay, number one, for or against, for or against, uh, for or against.
Got the public comments.
Public comments. Miguel? Okay. Miguel Gomez?
Yes. Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Miguel Gomez for the record, I'm here on be- on behalf of the owner, uh, we concur with the planning and zoning staff. And we'll support the item, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Please keep in mind, we want the R one to be the zoning, we're not asking for a zone change. We're just asking to build a second uh, family home on in the second lot, we own two lots. There's one family, there's one house that overlaps over the two lots, and we're just asking to build a second home in the back of the lot, so. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Alright, Abraham Martinez?
No, just one.
No? Alright. And uh. Raoul Santos.
Hello, good evening, everyone, my name is Raoul Santos. And I have a house adjacent to the property that is seeking this conditional use permit. And I am against it, along with several of my my neighbors here as well. We do not want, we want our neighborhood to stay exactly the way it is, don't want any changes whatsoever. That's it.
I have a question, Mr. Santos.
Yes.
How many residents are here that are not in favor of the of the conditional use?
They're not in favor?
Correct.
One, two, three, four?
And did you all, did you all make it known when you received that notice that you were not in favor of it? You did?
Yes.
How many people signed up as the uh, petition?
Twenty-four people.
Twenty-four people, and they all live in the neighborhood in the area?
The impacted within the two hundred feet of the of the of the property.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. For or against? For or against? For or against?
Rick.
Mayor, may I have a a question?
Yes.
Um, or for Ms. Guerra, Ms. Guerra, does the petition then entail that a super majority would be needed to vote?
Well, in this case, yes, a super majority would be required. Uh, in this case, the petition we got was uh, copied, so we could, we can accept those, they have to be original signatures. So they are not reflected in your s- in your staff report, however, the oppositions that we did get do meet the threshold. In this case, so we would require a super majority.
And so um, could you explain what triggers the super majority?
Uh, if it's, we get opposition from twenty percent or more of the surrounding property owners within two hundred feet of of the subject property. Which we did in this case.
Didn't they were just copies?
Uh, well, the petition was just copies, but we did get uh, actual official responses.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Yeah, uh, your packet reflects that we got uh, six in opposition within the two hundred foot and two uh, outside the two hundred foot radius. Cuz we noticed three hundred.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
What was our main concern? I brought them with me. It says parking area will be too congested, I still continue not to support. It might be two lots, but the original house was built in the middle of the two lots, therefore the space. Where they want to build another house on Meniola is narrow and will create parking issues. Uh, traffic congestion, parking, seems like mostly parking.
Ho- how much is the square feet total?
Uh, for their lot, I'm not sure if I brought it with me, it's two full lots. So it's probably on the order of what?
They look small. How much?
Twelve thousand. Cuz it's, like I said, it's two full lots.
Mayor, I'd like to motion to die.
Second.
Motion?
Yes, go ahead.
Does that second uh, addition, is it come with the?
With the parking, with the driveway and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yes, they've they've met the requirement.
Alright, motion?
Motion to die.
And second?
The only second.
Second?
The only second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Alright, number two.
Fifty-nine.
The motion to die.
Yeah, the die, yeah.
For or against? For or against? For or against?
Counselor, go ahead.
Oh.
Go ahead. Me, me, just standing with KCI Technologies, uh, here to represent our client and here to state that we support this uh, zone change. And try to answer any questions if you may.
Alright.
That's uh, number two, right?
Yes, number two.
Number two.
Motion to approve?
Motion second, all in favor? Opposed?
Close and introduce.
Close and introduce. Close and introduce.
Oh, close and introduce, sorry about that.
Okay, all in favor, close to introduce.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number three, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Motion to die, close and introduce?
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number four, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Is he got it?
Number, number four.
Is he got it?
Number four.
We're on forty.
Number four. We vote on number three, I think.
Motion to close and introduce?
Second, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number five, for or against? For or against? For or against?
My name is, uh, José Ramírez, I'm the owner of the house on the corner lot that uh, that's uh. Like we wanted to build that the house in in on that lot, um, I don't know, I'm just here to answer questions or concerns.
Mayor, Mayor, brother?
Yes, go ahead.
What are you trying to build, sir?
Uh, there's a a dwelling, uh, something.
Single-family.
On five. I'm sorry, this is for them, you're here for them, excuse me, Mayor, may I? You're here for number four, sir, or number five?
Number five.
Number five. Number five, just clarifying.
Yeah, yeah, you're.
Alright, any questions?
Number five, uh, did we get any response in the planning and zoning committee meeting?
Um, planning and zoning recommended approval with regard to the letters we sent out twenty-two, and we got none in favor and none against.
Mayor, I'd like to close and introduce?
Second.
Motion?
A motion to approve?
Second, any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Number six, for or against? For or against? For or against?
We have, we have somebody to speak.
I'm for, Christopher Caskey, part of the real estate that owns the lot.
Alright.
Second.
Alright, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor, motion open up public hearing and introductory ordinances?
Motion second, all in favor? Opposed, motion passes to open public hearing and introductory ordinance.
Public hearing, uh, number, number one, public hearing and introductory ordinance of the city council of the city of Laredo, Texas. Uh, finding that a sixty-foot right-of-way R O W legally described as zero point seven zero seven nine acres. More or less out of Moreno's uh, share seven track in Portion thirty, abstracts four sixty-nine, Webb County. Texas, as depicted i- as track uh, one in exhibit A is no longer necessary or beneficial for public use. This segment of Andy Ramos Road originally donated and design- designated as a public uh, R O W. R O W uh, has become obsolete and causes traffic confusion due to its dead-end configuration. Authorizing the closing, vacating and abandoning of Andy Ramos Road. Which will revert back to the abutting owners, Kilam Oil Company, L T D, in accordance with uh, applicable laws. Public hearing number two, public hearing and introductory ordinance amended chapter twenty-three Parks Recreation, section twenty-three dash six. Of the court ordinances of the city of Laredo to establish the uh, the Buena Vista Sports Complex as an independent city park facility. Within the Parks and Recreation System, providing for the adoption of a fee schedule for the complex prohibiting. Fee waivers by indi- individual city officials or council members. Providing uh, limited use uses for city promotion purposes at the discretion of the city manager, providing for publication. And an effective date and providing for servability. Public hearing number three, public hearing and introductory ordinance of the city of Laredo, Texas, amending chapter thirteen. Food and food products of the city of Laredo Court of Ordinances, providing clarification on the adoption of of rules, regulations. And associated fees for health department services, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative. Providing the a servability clause, providing for publication and declaring an effective date. Public hearing four, an introduct- an ordinance of the city of Laredo, Texas, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents. To effectively effectively donate the property located at four oh nine San San Bernardo. To Webb County, uh, Texas, a political subdivision of the state of Texas and to donate. One one million dollars to be used for the maintenance operation of the Veterans Museum. The property will be used to create a Veterans Museum, which will be u- for the use and enjoyment of all citizens of the city of Laredo and Webb County. Public hearing number five, public hearing and introductory ordinance of the city of Laredo, Texas, repealing and replace- replacing chapter thirty-two vehicles for hire of the court ordinances for update. And application process, required fees, and to simplify the streamline. And streamline the vehicle for hire process, providing for servability, repeating the all ordinances in conflict and providing an effective date. Public hearing, public hearing number six, public hearing in consideration of a motion to consider exterior alterations of front facade. Which includes the addition of three row uh, security metal doors on the south fifty-three point one feet of lot five. Lot forty-one, Western Western Division located at one ten, eleven ten Lincoln Street. This property is within the Old Mercado Historic District. Historic District Landmark Board failed to establish quorum on June twelve, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting. June twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, special meeting, and July ten, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting, therefore the item is being presented to. For council consideration pursuant to municipal court of ordinances, section two dash one fifty-six, which states. To the extent permitted by law, if a committee is unable to establish a quorum for a regularly scheduled meeting, the city manager will may bypass the committee. And place any item on the committee's agenda for that meeting on the next regularly scheduled uh, city council meeting. Ordinance number twenty eighteen zero uh, zero fifty, staff does not support the application.
Alright. Public hearings and introductory ordinance, number one, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Mayor, I'll respect, um, I think it's important to mention that um, besides the quorum, when the committee is not forming, right?
Name, name and title, please.
Okay, this is not the number six? No? No, number one, okay.
Motion to close and introduce?
Motion, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Number two, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Motion to close and introduce?
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes. Number three, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Motion to close and introduce?
Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Number four, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Mayor, I have a question on this one in particular.
Alright.
Question is, is this the um, the property that was being donated by the Farias family? Is that 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 museum, or is this another property that we're donating and and contributing to?
Yes, it's for the veterans, uh, I believe it's for the Veterans Museum.
But it's a Farias property?
Yeah, Mayor, council member, it is the donated property.
Okay.
And so uh, this actually completes, uh, because we were part owners of the property. And so we're we're dedicating it back over to the county, and then we're providing the the million dollars to complete the the the.
The construction that we had previously approved years ago, correct?
Yes, sir.
Motion to close and introduce?
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Number six, for or against?
Mayor, I I have a question.
Five, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, yeah.
Have we spoken to, sorry, verify, you know.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Have we spoken to the taxi community, uh, reached out to them?
No, and and Mayor and and council member, what we wanted to do again was to place the ordinance at your. So that you can review it first, once, what, if you adopt this version. We will then be sitting down with all of our state quotas, all of our taxi cab drivers, all of our operators uh, to say, this is what we're suggesting to go to.
And in the, in the, in this uh, chapter, in this uh, court ordinance that we're trying to do for pass. This includes something that's something they always, you know, uh, they have a concern about. It's about those uh, the so-called pirates. They call them pirates, the the taxi community calls them pirates, is there an ordinance to protect? Is there an ordinance to protect them or help them, help them not to get, I guess, um, you know, trying to figure out, because they always complain that there's people that, that take their, their, their job because they give them a ride, and they don't, they're not insured, they don't have a license, and they didn't, they don't pay the fees, but yet other people come out and, and give them a ride, and they charge the fee, and they, they don't get, they don't get punished, I don't know if...
Well, you know, Mayor and, and council member, well, I'll need to, I'll need to walk back through that part on the pirates. So, so the state a few years ago en- enabled, uh, the transportation for Uber, Lyft, and all of that. And so, what we've done is we've tried to remodel this to remove as much of the restrictions on our taxicab drivers that we could. Uh, we still have the ability to regulate them, they're the only, they're the only, uh, for, vehicle for hire that we're able to regulate. So, but we've tried to reduce all those restrictions. I'm trying to remember if we had any, anything in there on the pirates.
Let me, let me, if I can, uh, Chief, I know you're here, I'm, I'm trying, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Chief, but I know that you've heard, uh, conversations before, complaints about people, uh, the taxi drivers that they say, and I know your officer have been, because they told, they have told me, and actually councilman, uh, Señor Ross has been there, that they complain about, uh, people picking up, uh, people from the airports or from, uh, downtown, taking them, taking, taking them to, I guess, Walmarts and all those areas too, and they're grocery shopping, but they don't have the license and they don't pay a fee or a tax fee for the vehicle. And, and I, I don't know if you, you heard about that, so.
Mr. Valdezco?
I was just gonna mention, Mayor and council, that, uh, yes, that has been, uh, uh, it, it might not be in the ordinance per se, but it is a more of an enforcement issue, and so I know that in the past you've tried to investigate, and so it's, it's more of trying to catch these people doing this.
Yeah, is it an ordinance, it's, it's, it's more of, uh...
I mean, enforcement, it's not allowed right now.
Enforcement, but if it's included? Do we have something included about?
So currently it's not allowed?
It's not allowed.
Because they're, they're not permitted to, to do that, so good evening, uh, Mayor, Councilman, Chief, uh, Mierrolias for the record. Uh, currently it's not allowed, uh, the, the, uh, the situation that we're running into, and we, we call them this phantom, uh, taxi, right? Right? Because they go and they take, uh, this, you know, anybody that goes in, gets out of the airport, they believe it's a taxi driver, and they take off and do all this other stuff, right, but they don't have permits. But to catch him, we have to do pretty much undercover operation, and to be able to enforce that ordinance, right? Um, at this point, we have in, the victim would be the city, right, in this, in this, at this point, but we would need somebody to report it at, at that point where they're, they're doing this, to catch him, yeah.
Well, well, we, we, okay, so this is, and it's good that we brought it up, I don't know if it's, if I, I don't want to mix it up, and I'm just gonna go over, overboard with this. You say it's like the phantom and whatever we got, you know, there's people that go downtown and they go out. Let's say something happens, and that's, and that's where I'm, right now, my mind went, just went from here to there, because I got young daughter, young, young daughters that do go downtown and do, they do go out, and it's like, okay, what if there's one of them, and then say, you know what, I'll give you a ride, I'm a taxi driver or whatever, and something, God forbid, something else happens. Is there something we gotta start, you know, planning and doing, executing, or, you know, just?
Mayor, yeah, I ran through the, ran through the ordinance very quickly here. In section thirty-two dash two, it says that you have to have a, a valid operating license to, to be a taxicab driver. Uh, it talks about the driver's permit, it talks about the issuance, it talks about the standards, the revocation of a driver's permit. So that's, this is for the legitimate taxicab drivers, if they're not keeping everything up to date. But for the pirates and for the ones that are not, uh, formally there, each violation shall constitute a separate offense, and each offense shall be punishable by a class C misdemeanor, by a fine not to exceed five hundred dollars for each day the violation exists. So there is, there is the ability to penalize illegal operators within this, this, uh, ordinance. So, um, and, and so what, what we want to do though is we want to make sure that we get this draft into our taxicab driver's hands now, our stakeholders look it through, uh, police department and everybody. We can make sure that we've hit all the marks that we, that, that you've heard about and all the others, so, yes, sir.
So without a license, they will be in violation?
No, there you go, sure.
Who's next? Okay, go ahead.
Um, so, Mr. Neb, that is, I think, what, um, I, I'm sure, I, I share, council member Ron Helsk's concern that the taxi drivers do have a chance to review it, because they, it is a, a pretty long list of, 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 uh, standards that they have to maintain. I think that, uh, according to them, they were maintaining a lot of those standards, but we just want to be clear because of their complaints about these unlicensed drivers that are, that are taking their business. Um, I think i- it seems as if the, the licensing, the permitting will be more visible, I think that will help. And then perhaps if we could have some signs in the airport, like they do in other airports, that say, please do not get into an unpermitted vehicle for your own safety, right? And that also encourages people to be more aware that the drivers that they are engaging are indeed permitted and legal and legitimate.
Our, our goal was to keep the, the taxicabs on the same balance with the Ubers and the Lifts and everything, and keep it so that it is a good, good market structure for, for everybody that's out there that's trying to assist, so.
Go ahead.
Uh, I think with regards to Uber is that, is that you, you kind of log into their, their system, and they kind of outsource and find you a driver, so there's a little bit more of a trust there that all the drivers have kind of gone through a vetting process with Uber, versus here, you know, you have independent people that are just kind of offering rides, and if you're trying to take a taxi, like, uh, another, you know, you do in other places, the system isn't exactly the same. Um, I understand that they have to have a permit, but like, is there any way that we can require that they have their permit, uh, available, and that we require them to give a handout perhaps, uh, like a copy of their license to whoever they're gonna give a ride to, that can be verified on some licensing site, so that if you have any questions or concerns, you can verify the legitimacy of that particular provider? So that way, um, it's, I think it would be taking the ordinance a step further and not just requiring and putting the burden on, you know, the person to have a license, but at the same time for them to prove it to whoever they're gonna pick up. That way, it creates an extra layer of security.
Mayor, if I may, just a clarification?
Yes, go ahead.
Don't they require a sticker on there already for the permit that's visible to the public?
Yeah, yeah, I, I believe there's, there's, there, the permit has to be located within the vehicle, but there is also that the vehicle has to be identified as well, too. There is still the, uh, the need for a rooftop sign on the vehicle that says taxi. And so I, I think we can do a multi-approach on the checks and balances within this structure, so.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna piggyback on that, uh, I know that years ago, we used to, uh, enforce that, that the placard or the sticker was visible, opposite the car sticker on the opposite side, and that they did have signage, uh, around the vehicle that, that notified the public that they were legitimate. And, and it only helped for, for pirating, you know, it helped for safety reasons also, because you can just get that number in case there was some complaint, and, uh, you can file it with the city of Laredo, and the city of Laredo would follow up with that. So it was a check, kind of checks and balances thing, I would, I would hope we could continue with that.
Mayor, I can answer that, if I may, yeah, so under section thirty-two dash seven, each vehicle that passes inspection shall receive a decal that should be affixed to the inspected vehicle, as per the section, right?
Exactly, it's on there, it should be there.
Mayor?
Oh, just to, just to expand a little bit on the previous question, uh, is that the ordinance?
That is the ordinance.
Well, can we expound the ordinance, possibly explore, expounding the ordinance to not just have the sticker, but again, have a copy of your credentials?
Right.
And maybe have, take it an extra step on some more visibility on the exterior?
Most definitely, we'll, we'll explore all that as we have these discussions with the taxi drivers, and that's something we can do.
Great, thank you. All right, motion to close and introduce? Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Number six now.
Here we have a public comment on number six.
All right. For or against, now you can go, now, for or against, for or against?
Good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, thank you for your time, and, um, for the record, Victorio Santos Junior, and I'm here to support, uh, El Arlo Media's remodeling project, I'm in favor of this motion, um, simply because, uh, we're against the flagrancy and the vandalism that has occurred, and we, we have a space where we do a lot of productions, and we're getting busy all the time, and we believe that's very important for the security, uh, of, of the properties and, and, and also our persons. So I'm here, uh, of course, in the position of favoring that, uh, motion. And, um, I guess lastly, I wa, I wanna just say it personally, I have the intentions to invest downtown in this future, and, uh, of course, it depends on, uh, upon the city decision. So, uh, that's said, uh, uh, I'm done with my commentary.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I'm sorry, your name again?
Victorio Santos Junior.
Mr. Santos, well, thank you for, um, for being a downtown property owner and investing in a business. I think, I, I know that one of my concerns was that these, um, that these gates were not, um, they're not in line with his, what the historic preservation, uh, ordinances or guidelines usually suggest, but understanding the situation downtown and the security needs as they were explained to me by council member Alyssa Señoravon, I just, I, I understand why, uh, you feel that they are needed at this time. I just hope that in the future, when we do see downtown become revitalized, and we do have that expectation, right? There are plans being laid, um, it's slower than any of us would want, but I hope there would become a time when you would feel that you could remove those and restore that facade that we're looking to preserve the historic character of our downtown.
I, I agree, I agree with you, Miss Señoravon.
I'm the owner of the property, by the way.
Yeah, personally, yeah, we're collaborating right now on a radio show, uh, we're, Sundays at ten P M, a hundred point one, in case you wanted to, so. Um, the, the reason is, um, we are both looking at the problems, the real problems in streets, and this is the circumstances where you have to put, whether you have the right decision being made, or the best decision being made. And the thing is, this is not, uh, we, we understand that there's a historic preservation intent from, from the parties, right? The thing is, given the fact that there hasn't been any quorum in the last meetings, given the fact that they already broke in the windows, and with that in mind, what I'm trying to say is that we're not trying to come out with a Frankenstein here, where we're putting a lot of stuff from outside, or from different architectural, uh, styles or, or tastes, but, uh, iron curtain that is pretty much everywhere downtown, we kind of believe it's a very strict measure when we're doing independently, unitedly, independently, a lot of work. Who's gonna take care of us? We take care of ourselves, as much as we can, so we don't place a burden on police and the rest of the city's resources. But, I mean, that's, that's pretty much my standing here, my, politely, but for me.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Why does staff not approve? Yeah, let me get staff to see why they don't approve.
Good evening, Mayor, Vanessa Gado from your planning staff. Um, this is, our position, of course, is always based on our, uh, adopted plans, with the comprehensive plan being our, you know, guiding, uh, structure, uh, guiding document, and, uh, historic preservation is also bound to make its considerations based on the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation of Historic Properties, as well as our adopted urban design guidelines. Both of the documents do not recommend, um, alteration of the storefronts, obscuring, um, storefronts, um, in the downtown area. It's basically as clear as that, it's just not recommended.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, do you have, do you have plans of changing the facade along, you know, as we go on further, the, hopefully, we, we pick up business? Do you have, uh, like, plans to change it out, and?
As a matter of fact, I'm on the, on the process of changing it out, and I'm not changing it out, I'm, uh, pretty much, uh, uh, replacing the doors, and that was the whole reason, and that was the whole reason I get this violation, because of the fact that I'm here is that, because I got a violation on the city. I was getting that commercial apartment in order so I can change doors, stayed in the same way it is, just reshaped them, and in the middle of this, I got a violation for having the, the, the metal gate stores.
So those doors were there before you bought them?
One of them was there prior to my purchase, I purchased it in two thousand twenty-one, uh, one of them was already there, the second one has the frame on it. It had, it had the frame on it, so I put it, and the third one, I already had installed it. This one I have started in a fashion that is all the same, following the same, uh, measurements, and aesthetically, I, I do believe that it's, uh, it's looking better every time. I've been working on that beautiful last four years, and I'm trying to improve it as much as I can.
All right.
Just a clarification, there was no citation issue, it was just a warning?
No, we're not.
Okay.
May I ask a question? Okay, so my understanding, you were trying to make an investment, um, in, in changing something with your store, and then in the process, which this happens a lot, like, the attention gets drawn on your property.
I want to leave that.
And so you are, then there, because there's lots of other properties downtown with the exact same facade issues, they're just, maybe they're not in the middle of, uh, improving or renovating their property, so they're not getting cited, or it's not getting, you know, addressed by the city. So it's essentially punishing, punishing you, is how I'm interpreting this, um, for, for acting, for moving. That's, that's, that's how I'm viewing this, and, um, I, but I, I, I see the aspect of wanting to preserve historic, but I think that's like putting the cart before the horse, like, we are trying to, uh, increase investment into downtown and, and, and get the economic activity, and then from that, you get safer streets and safer, um, safer downtown, and then we can focus on, on being nitpicky on the facade thing.
That's correct.
So that's, I mean, I don't know how the council member Señoravon feels about that, uh, being in her district, but that's just kind of my big picture interpretation of this situation, but if you, anything that I, you disagree with?
Do we really wanna get technical on this? I mean, the, the metal gate is actually not stuck to the, to, to the building, it's connected to the wall. I mean, it's, it's connected not to the wall, to the floor, so it has a post, and that from that post is what are the problems in the gate. So technically, it's not touching what it would be historically, the building, or the facade in this case.
All right.
Thank, thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, and, um, I'd like to close and introduce the, the item, and I would just thank you both for investing in downtown, and I apologize that, um, there are so many hoops that are in it.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Councils to introduce number seven and eight introductory ordinances? Council, exactly, correct. Um, on number nine, motion, motion to approve, on number nine. Third and final reading.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven, eight.
We introduced, we introduced them, yeah, we did. Yeah, correct, right.
Number nine?
And, number nine, yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed, motion pass.
Motion to approve, final reading of ordinances, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Yes.
Second.
Item eighty-two. Item eighty-two, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, item eighty-two.
Um, twenty twenty-one oh one fifty-two vacant building registration, and...
Mayor, do you have a public comment on?
On eighty-two?
On eighty-two.
Yes, okay.
We do the public comments first, yes?
We can.
Yeah. Let's see, it's, uh, Julian Rotnovsky.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, my name is Julian Rotnovsky, and I'm here tonight as a downtown property owner and a downtown business improvement district board member, who's deeply concerned about the vacant building ordinance and the changes made recently by staff. The ordinance was amended after discussions with just two individuals since our last council meeting, one from the business improvement district and one from the curves board. Neither of the recommendations made, made it into the amended version. Instead of improving the ordinance, it was made more aggressive, more punitive, and with larger fees. The updated ordinance now finds property owners not just for neglect, but for simple, but simply for vacancy. Even if the building is up to code, even if you're actively trying to lease it, if it's not sixty percent occupied, you're required to register and pays the, and pay the steeper fees. It also introduces vague subjective language called the minimum standard of care. This means even minor subjective issues like chipped paint, a little bit of rust, faded signage can trigger a violation. This level of scrutiny doesn't exist anywhere else in Laredo. Downtown property owners are being unequally targeted. Downtown property owners are being unequally targeted. Now, staff says that this is about the public safety. But the city already has the authority to to red tag unsafe buildings. The power already exists. So the question is, if safety is really the issue, why not use the tools already in place? Now, now the ordinance does include what sounds like a helpful carve out added. You can apply for an exemption from the fees if you meet certain criteria. And one of, and on the surface, that sounds fair. But here's the catch. If staff doesn't respond to you, your request, within thirty days, you are automatically denied. Not pending, not under review, just denied by default. And while, and we all know how slow city processes can be. So even if you follow the rules and submit everything correctly, if staff is delayed, overworked, or just forgets, you're you're the one who pays the price. That's not a carve out. That's a bureaucratic, a bureaucratic trap. And your only way to appeal according to the ordinance is take the city to court. The ordinance doesn't encourage investment. It doesn't incentivize leasing. It incentivizes demolition. And let me explain why. If you're facing a hundred thousand dollars in mandated upgrades due to new standards of care, and you still might not find a tenant, it starts looking a lot more practical to spend twenty thousand dollars to tear down the building. That is how cities lose their identity, one well-intentioned building at a time. And here's the part that is especially frustrating. The original ordinance, the one passed by council, specifically required that the city staff conduct joint outreach with downtown property owners. That was section seven forty. It clearly stated that the city would introduce, engage, and inform stakeholders. Council directed staff to do this at the last meeting I spoke at. And what did staff do in this amendment? They deleted the language entirely. Instead of increasing communication, they removed the requirement for outreach. All of this happening while recode Laredo still hasn't passed. The very update to building codes that would actually make the renovations possible. So today, we're pushing property owners for not updating building, we're punishing properties for not updating buildings while refusing to pass the code updates that would help them do it. The ordinance doesn't support revitalization, it undermines it. And left unchanged, it will do a lasting damage to downtown. I don't think anyone here wants downtown to be neglected, but this policy treats property owners like obstacles. This hammer of a policy will only see nails. When in reality, we're the ones fighting to invest, to restore, and to revive our city's core. Help us do that, not by penalizing presence, but by partnering with purpose. That's why I respectfully ask council to rescind the ordinance today, remove it in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment also on this item, Justin Heather.
I'm your mayor, City Councilmembers. Justin Heather, Chair of the Downtown Business Improvement District, as well as Vice Chair of the.
In the middle. The red light.
In the middle, okay. Sorry about that. Justin Heather, Chair of the Downtown Business Improvement District, as well as Vice Chair of the TERS number one for downtown. Mr. Rotnoffsky put the points very well. So I'll just say briefly that I think we have moved from no Karen and all stick to a no Karen and all Louisville slugger. If you look at the current state of the ordinance, it has increased fees. It has increased the penalty from a fine not to exceed two thousand dollars to a fine not to exceed two thousand dollars on a daily basis. The minimum standard of care, based on the my employer's acquisitions downtown, would approximate to about eighty-seven thousand dollars per building. And we have over a hundred buildings. And I understand the 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 city's position, that it needs to have money in order to fund those who are going to do the investigation, the inspections. But on the other hand, and also, if you're going to look at economic sense, you have to look at the economic sense for the business and property owners downtown. The study that was performed by Main Street on the city councils perhaps several years ago indicated there are over a hundred vacant buildings downtown. So that is going to be a years-long process to fill those properties. And we're going to require building owners to invest eighty-seven thousand or more dollars, eighty-seven thousand or more dollars, just to get up to code, much less marketed, knowing that their return on investment is five, six, seven years down the road. So again, respectfully, I think that we need to find a a better balance with respect to a vacant building ordinance. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So my understanding is, and I'll let Miriam speak. I just like thinking about this original ordinance was passed in twenty twenty-one, when three out of nine people up here were on this council. And then, so two-thirds of us were not here during that original discussion where this passed. And it was found out that during pandemic and later, that that it was just never enforced. And the city decided to enforce it and delay it by so many months. But I mean, part of me just feels like, you know, starting over makes sense. But I but I want to let staff speak as well, I'm sorry.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Miriam Castillo, Director for the Economic Development Department. And unfortunately, we have the last meeting's presentation here. But today's item, as a staff report, was pretty much just give you an update. As you all know, we came before you at the last council meeting, and that particular item on the amendments that were being recommended was tabled and directed from City Manager's Office was that we conducted exactly what was just mentioned, the outreach. We did meet. We had a preliminary meeting with both the Chairman for the Business Improvement District and the Chairman for the Downtown TERS. So really, tonight's item was just to give you an update, that we conducted our first preliminary meeting. They were given the list of all the amendments that were being proposed and considered at the City Manager's Level Office, with some feedback from our department as well. But this item under a staff report wasn't necessarily asking for any action on amending any ordinance. It was just letting you know that we're conducting those meetings. Our next step is going to be taking it to the board, you know, the entire board at the TERS, the entire board at the Business Improvement District, our own Economic Development Advisory Committee, and even conducting some broader outreach with downtown property owners. Again, the amendments that were being presented to you at the last council meeting, that item and after the discussion and and after the directive of you all, the item was tabled. Tonight's item was just to give you an update on where we were, what's to come. And even though some of the comments at the last council meeting was talking about a sixty day or not, and as for legal recommendations, the item could only be tabled or not, that's why we just decided to come give you an update on where we are.
I have to comment. Go ahead.
Oh, I just, I just wanted to comment, Ms. Castillo, because I know this happened with another item. But the the proposed ordinance also didn't attach to the agenda.
Yes, because this staff report was, the the ordinance in the draft, as as it is right now, it's not even ready to be presented because we haven't concluded all the directives that I personally received from City Manager's Office.
Mayor and City Council, yeah. The the challenge we had was is that we had a directive to try to return this to this meeting. The intent here was to say we were not ready to have that that final report. That's why there's no document in there. That's why what what we're hearing from the Downtown Business District and the and the and the tiers are, it's it's half a product. It's not completely gone through that full conversation. But our challenge was is that we didn't get it done, but we had a directive from the council that said, please bring it back to us at the next meeting. But we weren't done with that review.
All right.
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Yes, so I just, for the record, at the at the last, the last meeting, I was told that I shouldn't speak because I own property in the district. But the fact of the matter is, we all own property and have business or operate, have business interests in the districts that we represent. So not speaking would be a disservice to the people, the very people that we we serve. And that being said, I appreciate what you're saying, Ms. Castillo. But at the same time, the item was written with discussion and possible action. And the the most up-to-date draft did not take into account any of the the input that the bid, the Business Improvement District Chair and the TERS Chair, nor the Economic Advisory Committee that has, that this has gone forth to before. None, none of the input is being recommended. And I would like to, rather than going in circles and wasting everybody's time, because, again, the the draft that I saw was much more aggressive than the intention of this draft, of this ordinance to begin with, which it was simply meant to be a downtown vacancy database. And what I what I have seen, and it's unfortunate that, I mean, I understand that it's still a draft, but we, there's quite a few items in this agenda. And we ask every time that that the that the attachments be submitted for all of us to be able to understand what we're looking at. But that, again, if we're serious about revitalizing downtown, this certainly isn't the way. It's discouraging investment, much, much more than encouraging it. And we're going to see the adverse effects of this ordinance take place. And people are going to start demolishing buildings, rather than going through all of the the trouble that the city, the hoops and the challenges and the delays that the city constantly, that we constantly face at the city. And we just heard this case from the Historic Landmark Board just a few minutes ago. And so I would personally would like to see this energy on how do we make our process more efficient with the Historic Landmark Board meetings and updating our guidelines and our historic codes? Because we're not helping downtown. And again, I, for one, am not prepared to support this item any longer until we improve our, improve our processes. And again, as it stands, we're driving business out and we're driving investment away. And I would like to move to halt this ordinance completely and and just table it indefinitely.
Joan, I have a question for Joan. She, Councilwoman Segueroa said she owns property there. Is she able to put a hold on this or to propose anything? Or should somebody else that doesn't have property do that?
If I may, I represent all of you individually. You know, I have spoken to Ms. Segueroa. There is a potential conflict there, but so far, she hasn't, I I don't see a a pinpoint direct conflict. So there's an air of it, but if she makes the motion, she she can make the motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
And no disrespect at all. But there's a major point that she made in the beginning. We all own property in each district that we represent. But the difference is, do you own property that's rented, that's able to be leased? That would be the difference. I don't own property for lease or for rent in my district. Other districts, yes, but not in mine in particular. So I just want to make sure she's okay doing this because of the fact, that's the difference. She has a a possible business as far as leasing or renting a property. And that makes a difference between, I think, the rest of us.
Yes, go along with that. I've mentioned this before. Our conflicts of interest in City Laredo deals with financial conflicts of interest. And by all means, you all own property, you all live in the city as required. So if you're in the general category of all other property owners and interests, then you you don't have a particular conflict. However, if there is a particular conflict where you, your loved ones, your associates can benefit financially, that's when the conflict arises.
Well, but is this a benefit? Because if we're going to propose to table this indefinitely, there is certainly a financial impact to owners that are downtown. She happens to be one, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you want to see it. But I mean, that that does sound like a conflict. It it is a financial burden at the end of the day. And I have a comment?
I see her point as a as a resident there and as a representative. If it happens to be, I know there there will be time to restructure this. I mean, I would like to make a motion just to table so we could restructure this.
I'll second.
Motion, second?
May I make just one final comment?
No, there's a table.
Yeah. There's a table motion. So you go then.
Small clarification.
The table.
Yes, so go ahead and vote on the table.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
All right.
Yeah, it's in table.
All right. Mayor, motion to open up the consent agenda and to request staff to make any necessary amendments that need to be made for the consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor, there are three minor amendments that were requested by purchasing. If I may go over them?
All right.
Number twenty, number twenty-six.
Really quickly, just back on, back to the item. For the record, we'll abstain from the vote since somebody else needs the motion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, number twenty-six.
Okay, number twenty-six should read, instead of, instead of reading consideration to approve, it should be consideration to renew. Item number fifty-eight, number fifty-eight. On the bottom of the agenda item, it says the total three-year con, the total three-year cost is four hundred thirty-seven nine nine six point nine eight, with a yearly payments of one hundred forty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-eight point ninety-nine through the Texas Department of Information Resources DIR contracts, DIR dash CPO dash forty-eight sixty-three, and DIR dash CPO dash five-three-three-zero. And then number sixty-five, number item sixty-five, instead of reading Texas DIR TSO thirty-seven sixty-three contract, it should read OMNI, O M N I A, contract number NCPA zero-one dash one-four-three. Those are the three changes.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve number twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Mayor, real quick, I I want to pull some of those out, actually.
Which ones?
Um, I'm sorry, not not those particular, but twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty?
And forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight.
Forty-seven means which?
Forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, and twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty.
Okay. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty also?
Yes.
Seventy-two?
Seventy-two.
From the consent.
Thirty-four, here?
Thirty-four also? Did somebody call out number thirty-eight?
No.
No. Did I take out number thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight.
Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda excluding the ones that were called out.
Second.
Motion, second? A little easier.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Number twenty, number twenty-eight, Mayor.
Number twenty-eight, let's see.
Oh, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, yes.
Mayor, for twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, if I may. The items, all all three talk about resolutions. And the resolutions were provided to us, but it does refer to a policy, all of them refer to policies. And I have not, and I wanted to clarify, are they, are we submitting a resolution with a with a policy that will be produced later on? Or is there a policy already created? Because I have not seen any policies.
Mayor and Mayor and City Council, I can answer a little bit of that. The intent is to develop the policy based upon the resolution that is passed by the council. Now, I have provided some draft policies as to how they are written. But so I believe we have, we have policies within each one of these documents. we have, we have policies within each one of these documents as to how they would be utilized.
Mayor, just for clarification?
Go ahead.
I didn't see any policies attached to the agenda other than the ordinance document, and then I don't have anything in our Friday packets or anything as far as created policies.
I do believe I had sent an email to the council on the, on the grants with the draft policies, but, uh, Ms. Castillo can cover these three really quickly for you.
Councilmember Mayor, um, I believe there has been then some items that didn't, the attachments are not showing because I know that they were uploaded to our system. Um, so I apologize, I'm not sure what the issue there on some of those, um, attachments as far as the policies. Um, the reason why none of this have been included or were not included in the last Friday packet, this was, um, a work in progress that even though this dates back from communication that City Manager had with you, I believe in June, um, they were, um, I guess assigned under our department to present them to you as a resolution. Um, some of those, um, policies, I can go over some of the summary on these particular policies, um, and I guess we can arrange for bringing copies for them. Um, Karen, if you wanna have access to them right now.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
The concern I have is approving a resolution to a policy that we haven't read. And so, if the policy isn't presented to us and if we don't have the policy, then I'd, I'd like to make a motion to table twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty for the next council meeting, so that we can get the policy draft for the resolution.
And before we vote on table in the items and avoid what happened with the last item, can I just make a, a, a quick comment?
Hold on, um, we need, we need a second in order to...
Motion, second? All in favor? Sorry, discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Perez.
Okay, are we voting for table?
Well, I'll rescind my motion until she states what she wants to state.
Thank you, Councilmember.
You got a chance.
In conversations with City Manager's Office on, on these three particular policies, um, yes, some of this communication happened, um, prior to, and, and some, some of those copies were, um, shared with you. It is my understanding as well that this resolution, it's gonna allow us to formulate and have the, this is a policy that is being considered, but not necessarily the guidelines that, just like any other program, um, that's adopted by the city will come back to you, uh, for approval, final approval in terms of the guidelines. Um, it is my understanding, and I will let City Manager's Office chime in as well, that this will give us the framework on what we would be looking at on each and every one of those three different policies moving forward. Um, I will give you an example if we're able to address one item in particular on the grants, um, management, um, that in particular, some processes have already been internally implemented. The intention is that we brought to you a resolution that will officially allow us to adopt that policy so that we can create the guidelines that are gonna be needed in terms of grants and partnerships with third-party, um, organizations. Um, that, I'm referencing that one because I feel that's the one that has a little bit, um, more of, um, urgency in, in a sense, because as you know, grants and deadlines, um, are constantly, um, they're just coming, um, pretty rapidly, particularly right now with the way, you know, federal entities are, are working. But I just wanted to make that clarification. I understand that some of these conversations have already been, um, held and, and shared the documents. The resolution pretty much allows us staff to, and authorize City Managers to create the...
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I appreciate that, Mayor. Uh, the thing, the, the problem that I have is approving a resolution for a policy that I haven't read. That's the issue that I have, so.
May I?
And, and we do have a meeting coming up, a workshop in a week, I believe, more or less. Um, if, if it's a timely issue, I would suggest sending us all the policies for approval and we can consider the resolution during that time if needed, or if not, we have August, maybe we meet every two weeks. Um, if it's a timely issue, we can discuss it, but I just, I'm concerned that we're given a resolution to approve, which basically ties to a policy that we're approving, but we haven't read it. So that's my concern.
Mayor and City Council, and I am very comfortable with the, the tabling of this and, and bringing it back with that. Just know that in July seventh, you did receive an email on the grant resolution, plus the two policies that were there, but I am comfortable with that. The, the intent of what we're trying to do is to establish these resolutions so that we know how, how, how I can move staff with the, with the, the pieces on there. Uh, I think the second item is on the public-private partnership and trying to develop out a structure as to how are we going to enter into these relationships for, for different types of, uh, the, the trip, so. But I am, I am very comfortable with, with, uh, having these things so that you have more time to review them, to make sure that you're, you're comfortable with what we're trying to accomplish.
Right, go ahead, Councilmember.
So, yes, I, so I, I did see what the proposed, what the proposal was, or in the earlier email, um, but it's still, I, I will agree with, uh, Councilmember Perez that it's still kind of the cart before the horse, 'cause I understand if, if what the policy is, is what the resolution is going to be, then, then you, you know, that's fine, but you're saying that you're gonna base it on what, it, it's just confusing because it wasn't presented as the final resolution. It, do, do you need direction? Would it be better to direct you to develop the resolution, or?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember, so, so part of the issue we have is that, um, we, we have a relationship with the Rio Ground International Society. They have asked that, if, when we implement something like this and they knew we were working on it based upon what we, what we'd been working with on them before, and they would like an opportunity to look at the policies and make sure that it works for them as well too. So I, I really, outside of a resolution saying we will have a grant policy, i- is really what, or a grant process, is what I, what I was hoping to get from the council was some type of direction for that. But I wanna make sure that we work with the stakeholders that have to utilize this, and that was, again, that was part of with the vacant building, that was part of with all of these different things. I want council to see it first and I want council to help provide that direction for how we go work with our stakeholders. That was the intent, so I apologize if it was confusing.
Well, because the language here suggests that you're creating the policy outright and you're asking for a resolution that you can use as a basis for involving our stakeholders out in the community. But that is not, I don't, I do not understand that from, from the language that's presented here. If that is the intent, then I, I am very happy to vote for a resolution that's going to include the stakeholder holders in the final product, so that just what hap- what happened here with, uh, building owners downtown, that they do not feel like that they are being ignored. And I understand you're just trying to get the formality of council approval for what you've already presented to us, to get it out there in the public and have a basis for which you can tell people, our stakeholders, this is what council is looking at, this is the direction we're headed, now what comments do you have, how can we improve it? So, um, I don't know how to make that language better in this, but I, I understand what you're doing, I'm just, I think I agree with my, um, colleagues that though it's not clear to us, that it's still in development.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so just kinda going back to item, for example, twenty-eight, um, uh, reading through the resolution, I, I don't see anything in there that specifies how we're gonna handle, like reimbursement scenarios, for example. Um, in, in the instance where we get a grant that we have to foot the money upfront and then get reimbursed, especially right now with the climate of a lot of grants are being cut and a lot of programs, and there's a lot of volatility in, um, our federal partnerships. So, you know, I don't see anything in there, but again, if an email came in, in earlier this month, I didn't have a chance to read it, so it's a, but we get a lot of emails, daily, weekly, so it's hard to know that this one is gonna be specifically tied to something we're voting on versus something that we are just being made aware of. So, um, I'm happy to support a resolution, but under the understanding that a policy is gonna be coming forward for final approval, not under the condition that approving the resolution automatically approves the, the policy that we have not read.
And I will defer to our legal department and, and, and I believe that, um, that's also how I'm pretty much understanding this resolution. You know, this is just allowing us to really, um, come back with, uh, the, the entire, whether we had ordinance or, or not.
Joan, can you clarify, what are we voting on exactly? We're voting on the resolution, but does that automatically a- approve a policy, or are we pending the policy approval?
Well, the resolution would, uh, be the government body's approval of this action.
Go ahead. Um, I have a hard copy of the, of the email here, and it's easier for me because we do get a lot of emails, so if I hard copy it, then I scratch it off, again, throw it away. It just doesn't fit the, the, the resolution language in there. The resolution establishes the city's, uh, its grant managers to promote transparency, and that right there and then stops it for me. So, if we from, if we decide to go like, uh, Councilman Perez says for next week, I'm okay with the table, only because it just, if, if we're gonna sign this thing and, and we don't know what that policy is, it just doesn't, we, we don't start the process in the, in the right step. So, if it can withhold one week, I'm, I'm okay with that. Because I, right now, we'd have to reward it and say, we're, we're gonna vote on a resolution pending, pending policy approval, uh, for next week. And I'm not sure what seven days is gonna mean to that, you know, uh, in, in that timeframe. It doesn't make you move any faster on this, right? Because you can't turn it unless we approve the policy, right? Is that, is that what I'm thinking, is that correct?
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know that this is going to clarify anything, but, um, just in that line of, of argument, I do believe that the next step is to approach the stakeholders. And I believe that the city doesn't feel like it can approach the stakeholders without some type of basis to do so, which would exist in this resolution. Could we amend the language that, so it says, like pending final approval of the policy? Or it, that pending a return to council for final approval on this resolution? Because I also understand that you need to go and talk to the stakeholders and it seems as if the only way to do that is with the resolution. It's kind of chicken and egg here. So, um, something that would, uh, would admit that it's not the final version, but that would allow you enough credibility or approval from council to start those conversations.
Joan, go ahead.
If I may, Mayor, uh, how about, I propose that you use, use, uh, direct staff to, uh, bring back this policy as opposed to a resolution.
After discussions with relevant stakeholders?
Yes, that way you're, you're, I think it's the same effect that it's not a resolution. It's just a, a direction to go and, and, uh, work on this policy to bring back.
The, the motion would be to, um, provide a directive to management for developing a comprehensive grants management and partnership policy in discussions with stakeholders based on the information provided to council and return to council for final approval.
Yes.
Well, is that a motion and a second?
Yes, sir.
On twenty-eight.
All right. On twenty-eight?
Well, it's for twenty-eight, uh, Mayor, I just wanna clarify.
Go ahead.
Um, we do have stakeholders that have an interest, however, I don't agree that we should base our decisions on whether or not they agree, because sometimes there's, uh, changes and not everybody approves of changes. I think the conversation with stakeholders is sufficient enough, but our approval should not be contingent on whether or not stakeholders agree. So, that, if, if we're basically approving based on whether or not stakeholders appro- approve, then I can't, I can't support that.
And if I may, a lot of this, um, recommendations that are part of this policy and in working with, um, City Manager's Office, a lot of these recommendations come from us departments working through these grants, and, you know, it is true, there's gonna be maybe some policies or some sections that are not necessarily gonna align with, but we need those policies in place in order to, you know, make sure that we have compliance, that we have our cost of services, like all the, the areas that we internal departments, you know, sometimes face with projects that are being considered as part, as partnerships. But, um, I feel that it's a good balance, I mean, I, I think there's an opportunity to put together a good balance, but I will tell you, a lot of these policies, you know, those are needed at the department level, um, and, and yeah, those may not be necessarily one hundred percent accepted by, by, you know, others.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I, I do wanna clarify that I do, uh, support the initiative and I do support the policy, and I know we've had lengthy conversations over multiple meetings. The problem I have is that we got a resolution, not a policy, and we're approving both, and that's my concern, is that the devil's always in the details, and these are new policies and I just wanna make sure that they're covered and that, you know, it's sufficient. So, Councilmember Cigarrilla made a motion that would allow you flexibility to meet with stakeholders, um, but it would still require you to bring it back for final approval, so I think that motion is sufficient for, for tonight.
All right.
On all three items, correct?
Correct.
Motion, second. We have a motion and a second. None in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think thirty-four is next, um.
Thirty-four.
It's on the consent agenda, I'll, I can save my questions for later, I'd motion to approve item thirty-four.
Second.
And if you, if I, if I may, um, because we have some people coming in from, uh, out of town for one of the, uh, staff reports, uh, item, if we could move up item eighty-three and eighty-four, and then, um, ninety-two can, is also a part of that, um, so if we could, my motion is to approve item thirty-four and then bring up items eighty-three, eighty-four, and ninety-two, because we have people traveling from out of town.
Second. Motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Okay, so this would be, uh, item eighty-three, um, regarding the plan of finance, um, by our city's financial advisor, Mr. Nohosa and Mr. M...
Hey, good evening, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, Management. Uh, I'm here to present Mr. Noi Nohosa, Nohosa Estrela, he's here to present the financing plan this fiscal year.
You get the cookies.
Just now?
Yeah, it should be at the very top. Uh, you'll be able to email it to somebody here? To put on the screen? An email address, so that we can have the presentation on the screen.
Is there an email that has it?
Are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay, let's proceed.
I wanna make sure that we, you had a quorum, so.
Thank you, Mr. Nohosa, we're good.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Noi Nohosa, for the record, with the Stride Nohosa Company and, actually, Stride Nohosa now, and, um, what you have before you is basically a document that kinda follows what we discussed at a workshop, I guess, three weeks ago or so. And, uh, uh, page two is just another view of all the loans that the city has, general obligation bonds. And, uh, and then on the succeeding pages, or the next page, on page three, another view that you're familiar with of what all the loans look like as you pay them over time. The bars from left to right consist of a forty-five million dollar payment in twenty-five, and it drops all the way out to twenty, forty-four. The red line is what we...
The red line is what we pay bonds with property taxes. And the yellow line is the money that is collected from various enterprises to complement what otherwise you pay, you would pay for property taxes. So these are the loans that we normally cosign for whenever those enterprises have a lesser credit. On page five is basically a list provided by your staff to us this morning. And I don't know if uh Mistress Parso or any of you would like to discuss those. Basically, uh what we did. So Bond Council, uh Jay Juarez with McCall is with us too. Back in uh three weeks ago when I made the presentation, we talked about issuing certificates of obligation uh for a amount up to exceed sixty million. Um we came back and after discussions with council, we opted to break up the CO issuance into two uh financing tools. One is called COs, of which uh I think item forty four is asking for you to adopt the resolution to publish notice of intent as is required by law. And the other one is to issue tax notes for about twenty five million dollars and change. That's page five and six, what the various uses of those funds will be for.
Mr. Nojosa, I have a question. Everything's pretty much what we discussed before, correct?
Yes.
Any significant changes other than what you just mentioned right now?
Nope.
So.
Tax rate will not be impacted by the two cents that we discussed last time at the workshop.
Okay, so I'd like to open it up to the council for questions real quick, if you can, if we can. Dr. King?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. And uh, Mr. Nojosa, thank you for your time. Uh and I know for you, it's just the bottom line numbers, so maybe this is more of a question for staff. I'm noticing on page six, um you know, just this is a district specific question I have regarding McPherson and Shiloh intersection improvements. That there's a drop in the number there. Um and Mr. Chavez, I know you gave uh gave us a quote um of more in the five hundred thousand dollar range um just for one in one part of the intersection, especially the southeast section. This just mentions the northeast. But um what that's a drop from five hundred to two seventy five in the project list. So can can we explain why it's at two seventy five?
Mayor, if I, I mean, I'm gonna I'm gonna jump in here real quick. These project lists are not, it's set in stone, correct? I mean, it's still pending approval of the budget. It's still pending our whole budget workshop where we can discuss the projects. Right now, we're just setting a cap, correct? I just wanna clarify that because I also had similar questions.
They have to be ready by Tuesday, do they not, or?
On the twenty nine, we submit the proposed budget alongside the CIP uh project reached states, all the items that are in this list.
But are we are we done with that document at that point in time? The CIP has to be set by the twenty ninth? Or do we have time to, like Mayor Protem says? Okay, we can still go through until our final budget.
As long as we keep our projects within those same categories, correct? We always bond out for parks, uh uh infrastructure, those types of categories. As long as it's within those categories, we can still finalize which projects are gonna make the final cut later, correct? I just wanna clarify that for Dr. King because I'm pretty sure he's. And then I have and then I know that you all split up the numbers over the two different types of bonds. So that might be where the project looks a little less, but I don't know if you wanna.
I'll keep it short.
Answer this question with that.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, I'm sorry.
Mayor, council, people, good people, right, oh, Jay Juarez for the record. I serve as Bond Council to the city. Uh you're right, all we're approving today is a cap. And then the actual allocation is something that y'all can decide later when y'all go through the budget process. Um you're right, there's also three different series of obligations. There's COs, tax notes, and then PPF COs for personal property. But I hope I answered your question.
Well, I think Dr. King was specifically referring to one project, the the Springfield, the McPherson-Shiloh. I'm assuming you split that project up over several of the funding sources, correct?
I would have to defer to to staff on that, but this is just the amount that that we were given that they would be using from CO proceeds, an approximate amount, approximate amount of CO proceeds that they would be using for that particular project. There could be alternative sources of funds as well that get contributed to the project.
Ramon, Ramon, Mr. Chavez, can you answer Dr. King's question, please, on that specific project? On whether the amount was cut out or whether it was dispersed among different funding sources?
Yes, uh so we can go back to the original amount. I don't know if we have that. But the current amount that we have there of two seventy five, three fifty three, uh the estimated cost for those two intersections, right? Because we originally had the northeast corner. We had that estimated at three hundred ninety nine thousand two twenty five. By adding the southeast corner with an estimated cost of five hundred thousand, that would put the total uh of uh to complete those intersections at eight hundred ninety nine two twenty five. So whatever the difference is uh there on on whatever availability of funding.
Oh, you split it up.
I'm sorry?
Split it up. You split it up.
No, we we added because there was another intersection which was not included originally. And so we were adding that with a cost of five hundred thousand. It would be the difference of uh eight ninety nine two twenty five with whatever we have.
Dr. King still has.
Yeah, so if um if we could um amend um the the amount, um the total amount um in the tax notes to reflect that difference, to have northeast and southeast corners, uh that would be my motion.
Motion second. I just wanna check with Legal, is that is that an appropriate motion at this time for this?
Yes, he's amending. He's amending the the motion.
Yeah, well, it's not, you're not, you're not, the total amount stays the same. You're just allocating different numbers, right?
We would increase it.
No, I was, I was.
Increase it.
How much would it increase by? Mr. Nojosa? Are we able to increase it by another million?
It was six twenty, six twenty four.
Six hundred and twenty five thousand?
I I don't think uh it's not gonna be a difference either way. You add six twenty five to the CO issuance, the purpose has to be one that we can afford to justify if it's a CO or it's a tax note.
It's a, it's listed as a tax note right now.
So if it's on a tax note, it's not gonna make a difference. If you add another six twenty five or if you just amend, if you wanna keep the paramount the same and just amend that item and deduct it from another item, it's up to you.
I was, yeah, the motion would be to increase it by six twenty five.
Okay, but if it's on a tax note, then you increase it six twenty five. I don't think it's gonna make a difference.
Tax note, it's gotta be on the tax note.
That's fine.
To reflect the new, because the new estimates that have come in.
Yeah, and that does not require the publication of notice or anything like that, so you be safe.
So there's a motion to increase it by six twenty five to accommodate that particular project. There's a second, um we'll still have our final budget workshop. And if we need to make um modifications, we can. But let's go ahead and take a vote on that motion.
Councilmember? Um, Mr. Chavez, and and just for clarification, um so the increase in six twenty five uh is to attach other projects to this? Were those other, the corners of this intersection, is that is that correct?
Yes, this is to add another corner of that intersection.
Of McPherson-Shiloh.
So originally, when that was, it was included before and it 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 got sectioned off? And so was there a a plan to phase in?
But the only thing that was included originally was the northeast corners.
So and that's what's reflected here with the two seventy five?
Yes, correct. So now we are, we're adding the southeast corner.
Just for six twenty five, it's just one southeast corner?
It's the difference uh of both of them.
So so the total is six twenty five for both, for both?
The total for both is eight hundred ninety nine thousand two twenty five.
So you have listed here the northeast corners being two seventy five, the southeast corner will be an additional six hundred and twenty five?
For total.
Yes, for a total of eight hundred ninety nine thousand two twenty five.
If I may, if I may, Mayor.
Yes, yes.
The actual estimate is three ninety nine for the northeast corner, but it's for some reason, for some reason, two seventy five was there. Uh and then these southeast is five hundred, um totaling eight ninety nine. That's a difference of six twenty five. So that was the reason for the uh.
I have a que- I have a question on this, uh Ramon. Is it, wasn't this discussed at the MPO? Was this funded at all through the MPO, the the Shiloh-McPherson intersection, like, nothing?
No, Mayor Protem, not this one.
It was a different one, though. Councilmember?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, a clarification, and for the record, uh I think people with all this thing that's going on. Uh the clarification would be the difference between the PPA FCO funding and the CO funding on these projects, are you going out? At this, it is two totally different accounts when we do this type of stuff. One is for, consider CIP but for equipment and CIP for actual physical improvements to our city. And so, but you don't lump it up and just say, here's ninety million dollar uh bond issuance. Just go like that and we break it up over here?
Okay, that's a very good.
Very clear. You have, you have, you have the the BP FCO at uh twenty four three.
Yes.
And then twenty five, yeah, twenty five million over here on 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 the COs. Uh but so you you just don't combine both of them together and go get uh funding for it and then we break it up internally?
No, uh we're gonna get you three different loans. They're already broken up internally. But we're trying within the breaking up internally, we're trying to give you as much latitude within uh within certain aspects of what those funds are being used for. Uh you know, like it says McPherson Road, I'm sure we're gonna say roads. So we're gonna give you enough leverage that if for whatever reason McPherson Road comes on the budget, you know, then you can use for other roads, of course, on those amounts.
Okay.
It only helps some, but it does help you what I think you would like to have. And that is broader language on a big lump sum financing. And we can't do that, right?
It goes back to what we had mentioned before that kind of caught my eye within the bond election of last time, that. I know these these projects over here on the equipment side, that we were gonna be able to pay it on first.
That's right.
Because they have a lot uh shorter lifespan.
And the tax notes are actually shorter too.
Okay, good.
So if you go to page eight, it kind of gives you this um
Yes.
idea of how those loans are structured.
So the and then the third final question would be uh the three to five year impact of this. Um I know this isn't the only list that's gonna be available for for doing this kind of work over the next three or five years. The availability to go back, uh will that be in our scope, in our in our horizon?
Yes, in fact, if you look at that page eight, it sets itself for really, um so if you're in twenty six, the year forthcoming, that you're about to adopt a budget or adopt a tax rate, your payment's gonna be thirty five million, six sixty two, more or less. Um and then in twenty seven, it goes up to thirty six billion, three thirty nine. That's a six hundred thousand rate increase. Couple with this financings, we're also contemplating doing three or four refinancings, we call them refundings, of currently existing loans. And I try to see how we can accommodate those savings so that, in fact, you have capacity to do something in next year and twenty six for the twenty seven year. From twenty seven and beyond, your payments are dropping like we structure by a million or two million, in some instances even four million.
Some is four.
Yeah, so I mean, you pay your debt pretty rapidly. And that's not by accident. We've been doing that pretty consistently over the years in lieu of the fact that you are one of the fastest growing cities in the state of Texas. So you gotta always be ready to do something in case you have a need.
So it opens the door to to more financing as we go along.
Yeah.
I'm interested in the year three, year four area.
Yes, and one of the things that I share with uh Mr. Nevin and his staff is uh the importance of not only having this one year list, but also have a a CIP that I think we present to you all in the next week or three weeks. You know, what are you protect, what are you thinking about borrowing the following year and the third year? So cities of size with this kind of ratings, you're expected to have a five year financing plan or financing model that supports your financing needs, so.
So the second part of that, which doesn't uh might not even apply here, the financing for any renovations to the arena, that goes under something else?
Yes, that's a different enterprise. That's a sales tax.
Okay, that comes out of that.
You doing in-house renovations?
Okay, I was asked that today. That's why I'm breaking all these questions up because look, you're officially answering the questions that I was asked.
Yeah, this was part of the Budget Department. Last last workshop, we talked about two options, either using monies that we have in our our Sames account or financing. We opted in that. Uh there was a motion that we were gonna do it in-house. It's a five year plan. So we're spending approximately ten million dollars on a yearly basis for the next five years. And that's how we're gonna be remodeling the Sames lottery.
Okay, perfect.
Councilmember Cigarroa?
Uh, thank you. Um I noticed here that uh the district priority funding has changed to from two hundred to, I don't know who I'm addressing, two hundred to five hundred thousand. Um so that increase is three hundred thousand per council member and it's it's significant if you add it up. I know that there's also a plan to uh tie tho- that expenditure of funds to a policy about keeping it within the CIP and having, like you said, a five year plan so that those monies are spent in accordance with what our infrastructure plans are. Is there, is there any recognition of that at this point? Or does there need to be any recognition that the monies aren't to be used for whatever, they actually have to be tied to sort of like the bonds, right? That they have to be tied to specific categories?
Uh Jay Juarez for the record. Um so there's nothing explicitly that mentions that, but state law would require that any priority funds that you all are using are used towards projects that are covered by the ordinance from that financial tool that you're issuing. So for these COs in particular that we're issuing here, the pri- the priority funds that you would generate from that would need to be used for these hard purposes and stuff like that, that that's within the purpose language of that CO. Some of my attorneys are working on a letter for you guys, provide some additional guidance on that.
Okay, because that's that's a significant change from what we were seeing before. The first proposal was only two hundred thousand and now we're increasing it by three hundred thousand. And and perhaps then it's not um, it's not a policy that's tied to the bonds, but this has more to do with a a policy that we'll be adopting to, if we're gonna have that much extra money in our accounts, then we do want to show the public transparently what it's going to be spent on.
Mayor Protem, pardon me. And Mayor's coming in as well too. So yeah, so the the idea is that as we learn through the bond referendum, as we learn through the the budget surveys and everything, is that uh the concern that the public generally has is that what is, what what, why, why do you need the money? And what are you gonna spend it on? So the idea was to, again, just like our conversation on twenty eight, twenty nine, and thirty as well too, to develop out a resolution that says this is how we will utilize those dollars for every district within that structure. The nice thing, and Mr. Juarez talked about it a little bit, is that because it is bond money, it is restricted in the types of use that it already is. We're he, we're gonna get it a little more detailed for you. And then what I would, what I would ask for the council to consider would be a resolution that says this is how these funds would be utilized. If we can get it down to a a project plan, just like all of our other departments and everything, it would be a really nice thing to be able to show within our budget booklet, this is how we're gonna do District one or two or three, all the way up through eight. And so that that'd be the, that's that's the recommendation from management is is that let's develop out that structure. Let's say this is why this, these funds are important and this is what they're going to be utilized for.
And would we have department assistance in developing those plans? Since I imagine that I, you know, there, these are city needs. For for our district, obviously, but these are city needs. So to have the department um contribute information targeting where these funds would best be spent.
So in my update email that I did send out this weekend, uh the idea was for for the mayor and the city council was that we would get staff in touch with each one of you to say, alright, if you if you were to have these funds, exactly where, where do you, how do you wanna move them and how do you wanna utilize them, so?
Well, I think it's important because this is a big increase, right? We were talking about two hundred thousand, now we're talking about five hundred thousand. And not that there aren't needs in the district, but we just wanna be transparent with what the. And not that there aren't needs in the district, but we just wanna be transparent with what the priorities are, what the urgency is. And how we come into alignment with, we've already pared down what we're going to be, be able to spend in this CO. And we just wanna make sure it's targeted and transparent for the public to understand why. They should feel comfortable in allowing us to have an extra additional three hundred thousand dollars in our priority funds.
Uh, I just wanna point out that every time we bond out for, for these priority funds, there are, they are allocated to projects. They're allocated to street repairs, speed bumps, uh, park improvements, uh, specific projects. So uh, I just wanna put out there, they're not, they're not discretionary, they're, they're tied to projects. And so, again, this is a maximum, a maximum amount that we're approving for, for bonding or for uh, for, for borrowing. But um, we can always modify a budget, what we're gonna uh end up settling at. So uh, these discussions on how much and everything, I think it's good for us to have a, a maximum amount. And then if we don't need to borrow the money, then we don't borrow the money. Mayor, I, I don't know if Mr. Nohosa wants to add anything else, I think the item is.
I think uh, just along with this, uh, I said to you earlier, um, if you go over to some page two, I think page three, you see a, a list of all your bonds. There are some bonds that are, that you're paying higher interest rates than today's market rates. So we're looking at about another forty to fifty million dollars worth of financing subject to being refinanced for savings. And those savings can only be used for, for the INS tax or benefit. So what we're gonna do is try to provide those savings and use them where you need them the most, like maybe have capacity for next year or twenty-eight, thereabouts. So let's just keep fingers crossed and the rates continue to stay favorable and we'll get there. After the, tonight, uh, you won't see us until September fifteenth. I know for some of you, that's really good.
That's too long, that's too long.
But anyway, thank you, Mayor. It's good to see you again.
Um, Mayor?
Yeah.
I know you, you were, um, I know Mayor Protem was in your spot, um, but technically there was, I did make a motion. It was seconded, uh, in the, and just to keep it, and Councilor Gonzalez, I think, so um, Mr. Chavez came back with a new estimate. For the McPherson and Shiloh intersections, um, under tax notes on page six. Uh, and, and there was an, an addition to the southeast corner, in addition to the northeast. And it was a difference of six twenty-four and I, I know we're just doing a cap today, but just to not have to take away from others and, and we have some flexibility. The motion was to amend the uh, the maximum uh tax note project list um by six hundred and twenty-four thousand. That, and we would come with, I mean, we would still be able to make changes at budget, but just to leave the flexibility open, um, I, I did make that motion.
It's on the table.
And it was seconded, so.
Oh, seconded. Did he vote?
Six twenty-five.
Let me, let me, let me clarify, uh, Mayor, if I can clarify that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So just for clarification, so the number that you see there, two seventy-five, three fifty-three, that covers the northeast corner.
But, but you said it's three ninety-nine for northeast corner?
Yes, but uh, there's a, this is a funding gap.
Okay.
From, from uh, the original uh estimate that we had. So there's uh, the difference is being covered, if that makes sense, okay?
So it's just a five, so just a five hundred thousand dollar change?
Yes.
Okay, so amended to five hundred thousand to cover the southeast corner.
All right.
Um, and, and this is to be subject to discussion and budget, just.
Hasn't been voted on?
Uh, no, we're, um.
Okay.
I'll second Mayor, uh, his amended motion. So right now we have that and then we would just need to approve it after.
Okay.
We can call for the question on that.
Secondest amended?
Yes, sir.
All right. Call for the question? Call in favor? Opposed? Motion passed.
Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve item eighty-three as amended.
Motion second? In favor?
And forty-four, Mayor.
And forty-four, eighty-three and forty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Safe travels. Mayor, I think the next item is item eighty-four.
All right. Item eighty-four.
Wait, did we motion to bring up eighty-three and eighty-four?
Mm-hmm, along, and along with ninety-two absorbed into that same discussion.
Okay, that's eighty-four, status of utility department. Status, uh, report with possible action by utility department underwater included but not limited to quality, infrastructure, level status improvements and any other matters related there.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
And Mayor, the, the motion was also to include item ninety-two with eighty-four because my item ninety-two addressed the water concerns.
Okay, that was part of the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, so um, I've been asked few questions about the water quality issues and the latest, you know, I've heard about the odor issues as well. So I'm here to talk about two pieces. One is the odor that we have felt recently and plus the. Oh, thank you. Cross department. So anyway, so I will make it really as simple today and tell you what my initial observation of what happened. So we start number one with that, um, you know, probably mid-June, we've received around three hundred complaints about odor and taste. From different areas of the city, north, south, everywhere. And uh, it's like earthy, musty, you know, dirt can smell, if some of you probably noticed that. I was, I noticed that cuz I wasn't new here, so I thought, okay, that's a strong odor there. So we did actually um, a lot of testing there and um. That what we found out and this basically based on my previous experience fifteen years ago, I've been through the same situation and. That odor is, is, is an indication of, um, what we call algae. So if you have algae in the water system and that algae is reached to a certain point, it's when it metabolism, it produce certain or, certain kind of compound. And that compound is what you're smelling and tasting in the water there. Now, just wanna be clear, this is not a health issue, this is an aesthetic, aesthetic issue, so it's really just an odor issue anyway. So just to make sure that we, we know what we're doing, so we took a sample and it was confirmed that it was what we call MIB. Please don't me, don't let me pronounce this cuz I can't so far. But MIB is, is a, is a, is a, um, uh, a signature of cyanobacteria which is algae. So at that point, uh, of course, all the samples we collected, actually not hundred fifty, but two hundred fifty samples, were all in compliance. With the TCEQ and EPA regulations, so no E. coli, none of that, so really just that issue of taste. What we then did is basically, uh, and I would probably maybe, sorry, I will just walk you through this, what I, what our results are. So we did three types of things, we did first flushing, we flushed the whole distribution system, the tanks, our storage tanks and everything. And then uh, we took the samples uh before and after flushing and also a third round of samples were taken from Alpico, a raw water system. And from Alpico tap and same thing for the Jefferson. The data shows that the suspect, I guess, the culprit here is MIB, was actually found in every sample. And the blue line, if you can see that, which is a ten nanomilligram, ten nanogram, is basically, is what we call the point where it's a threshold where you can test it, test it, feel it. Below that, sometimes up to two, you won't. So that was, I think, where we start to see this increased, you know, concentration there. The red shows uh concentration before flushing, our distribution, those kind of selective points from our hydrants. And the green ones show after flushing. Except for the windfall side, all the samples collected after flushing actually became lower, which means that flushing actually is helping. And reducing that kind of compound in the water system. Nonetheless, uh, the second round of sampling first post-flushing did not remove that compound from the water system. So, okay, so it's not in the distribution, it's not in the tanks, so we move to the next level, where is it coming from? The ones in the purple columns, that show you that we actually now sourced from, we sampled from the row, from Alpico River directly intake point and for after treatment. And from the Jefferson. And as you can see, this MIB compound is actually exists in the river itself. So it exists in different concentration, which confirms that everything we're trying to do now is not related to our distribution system or network, it's just a compound. Compound that exists in nature and the reason for that, sometimes you got a lot of algae, slow flow, high temperature, perfect storm. And then with, a lot of utilities around the, you know, the US, colet, uh, and outbreak. Not many speak about it. Unfortunately, the disinfection system does not, does not remove that, I think it's highly soluble in, in water, it gets through the system. So everything we do, chloramine and then sand filtration does not remove that. So that's why we're still, maybe some of you still feel it, it goes up and down depending on the flow and the river concentration. So what is the best solution to this issue right now? Everything with research shows and best utilities, what the, that I've seen so far, use carbon, what we call uh, um, uh, granular carbon or powder activated carbon. So basically, after our last station, which is sand, we add another unit, which is called polishing unit, which is activated carbon. It's the same thing you buy off the shelf, Perita filter, where you add water to a filter there, which is carbon, and I tested this at home and it works. So this is something what we call a polishing unit that does not exist in any of our plants right now. And therefore, if we need to do that, we need to get that piece of equipment, it's a filtration system. And there is also, as I said, the powder, which is you mix it with the, with the process to get things done. So for that, uh, really, right now, our strategy is flush when necessary, when we feel this is becoming out of control, we will start, continue flush. But in the same time, I've asked the team right now to replace all our sand filters in our plants. They haven't been changed since the inception of these plants, fifteen, twenty years, so we're gonna clean those filters. And also look at options of how we install those carbon filters post-final stage of the sand and continue monitoring of MIB. Juice semen, which is the other culprit, ammonia and E. coli. So far, as of yesterday, we have not had any positive sample of any of things, so we are in full compliance with TCEQ regulations. And finally, I think this is more of a bigger discussion with our stakeholders upstream and our partners. Because again, this is related to the organic load into the river, so there is sewer, um, there is, um. Someone is spilling sewer to the river, someone else is doing something, that impacts the load and therefore we get that kind of situation.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much uh for the explanation. Regarding the, the carbon filters, um, I believe, obviously, you've been on the job a month, right? So years ago, I was told and I don't know any staff that was around, uh, the last time we upgraded the filters. Coming out of the treatment plants, that we opted out of purchasing the carbon filters and instead, um, a cheaper type of filter that doesn't. Filter out this um algae. So what, what type, when are we doing again to replace some of these filters and what would the cost difference be, I mean, to the best of your knowledge?
Excellent question. Just let you know, the existing filters are called sand filters, basically sand and a little bit ca- carbon called anthracite and water flows through them. And we hope for the best, but unfortunately, this is a soluble compound, it will not remove that, that chemical there. So I think based on my previous experience again, that or activated carbon is the solution. I'm not sure of why, why that happened in the past. But right now, I'm actually reaching out to different companies and firms who do that, how do they install those units? I hope they don't break the bank, but I'm gonna back, come back maybe later on with some kind of an assessment, what that looks like. But again, it's not rocket science, it's, it's been done, there is a lot of the plants around, around the US that have those kinds of filters.
Is there a way to upgrade the current filters?
It's a post, it's a post.
Without buying an entirely new filter or you can just?
No, you have to install an extra polishing unit.
Okay.
It's like your revert, your filter under the sink and you need the last piece, which is the carbon piece, to remove that odor and taste.
Okay, do you happen to know how many filters it would require us to purchase or?
It's, it's an interesting question because our systems are open beds, like the water flows into a bed, it settles into the sand and then moves to the, to the storage tanks. So there are different types of carbon filters, some of them you actually mix with the water during the, the purification and some are just a filter you pass the water through. So there is too many technologies right now, honestly, so I'm gonna go back and do some research. We just became fully aware of this situation like a week ago now, so.
You, sorry, you mentioned a perfect storm of high temperatures, low flow and what was the third, third issue?
If you have a huge, a lot of turbidity, so turbidity increase those, those organics hide in those silt, minor than that. And when you, when you treat them, they don't really, they don't, they don't die very well, they, you know, you have that kind of entering the process. So high temperature, low flow and sometimes there's an, or there is some kind of nutrient, high nitrogen in the water that just gives you a bloom of these, of these. They sometimes causing blue-green algae as well.
Cuz when you, when you kind of gave that theory about the rain and then the heat, the temperature. And I'm like, I know you're from Canada, but you know, Laredo's always this hot, so that, that didn't feel like, um, I didn't quite understand that explanation. Cuz there's, I, I know people who've lived here their entire lives and have never smelt it exactly like it was this time. Um, and I don't know if the entire council experienced these complaints, you said three hundred city, why, I suspect they were in. Cuz for me, not even my entire district, I was getting the complaints, it was, majority was east of Loop Twenty. I know you're still getting new to, um, but outside the loop, the main loop, near Alamo Drafthouse Academy, that kind of area, the very northeast part of the city. So for me, it was like really concentrated the complaints in that area, I don't know if the three hundred, if we could get a map of those three hundred complaints and exactly the locations was. Cuz uh, I suspect that might have been an issue and obviously we have a lot of construction going on with tech stop. Also, also noticed an uptick in the complaints right after rain. It kind of rained again and it happened again and then I haven't really heard any complaints again in the last couple of weeks, but. So just trying, is there like a backflow issue involved here?
It's just sometimes rain flush whatever you have and sometimes adds to the issue, so rain doesn't mean more flow sometimes. I remember that rain event because it was like a sudden strong thunderstorm, quick flush. So whatever you have after a long dry season, that's probably drag, flush everything that you have on the soil, dirt, organics, whatever, that's. It is to the load of the river there and if it's not flowing fast, now you have a peak of everything, so that's sometimes what it means a, a perfect storm.
Would you also say decreased flow could have been attributed to the fact that it's the summertime and there's less usage or there's more, more people out of town?
Low flow means the water is not moving fast to oxygenate, to flush all of that, so there, there is enough time for, for algae to grow with the heat and the food, the nutrients. Just becomes very what we call a purification system, so that's what we have.
And I, I know you're still, you know, new, but are you willing to explain some of this to like local media, um, to kind of just get the word out about that?
Working with my, working with communication folks on some, some messaging already, I, I got your message as well, so we're working on this one as well, Dr. King, that TDS, which is also included in this presentation as well.
Okay, I was, my next question about TDS.
It's coming, yes. But again, just to clear, the map that you mentioned and why it's more in the northeast, if you can look at it, it's more in the Alpico source or the plant. Alpico has hi- the purple ones from Alpico shows you that there is a higher MIB there. Alpico Treatment Plant is a little bit different from the Jefferson and I, I don't wanna get into too much technicalities, but that's why you got more elevated concentration of MIB and from Alpico than from the Jefferson. Uh, as you can see, the Jefferson tap is way lower than the Alpico tap. Again, the treatment systems in the, in Alpico plant are a little bit not the same as the Jefferson and that created the, the amplification of that, of that compound.
Is it related to the carbon filters or not?
There is no carbon filters in none of them there.
Okay.
But also we, we, the map that we were looking, was I was looking, where are those? They were all over the city and in the beginning started in the northeast, but after a while, it was also in the south areas. It's probably some people just don't report that thing and by the time we were, you know, it was really all over the city there, but it started in the northeast. All right, so the next one is really just quickly talking about TDS. You know, there is some question about our salinity and where, how is the water is. So generally, just to give you, these are the three years readings of the, of the Rio Grande River and you can see that salinity range between six hundred to four hundred fifty. So this is basically because the river runs from wherever it's upstream, the Colorado, by the time it gets here, it mixed with everything, interacts with the nature, with the soil and the rocks. And that's why most of our water is around at five hundred to six hundred milligram per liter, which is above, you can see the red line, it's above the recommended limit by EP. You can see the red line, it's above the recommended limit by EPA. This is not a health, again, health issue, but a aesthetic issue. So it's just, you can feel that it's not like you're drinking your desalinated water bottle there. That's probably why you feel that it's a little bit different. Again, the increases due to the mineral rich soil as this river continue to flow to Laredo. We're downstream, there is a lot of agricultural wastewater discharge upstream and high evaporation, of course. That increase the concentration. This is, does not pose any health risk, but it's a kind of taste issue. Again, we are fully remain compliant with the federal and state regulations. And this is not a safety concern. So I just wanted to make sure, this is something that basically the answer to your questions. And we're happy to answer if there is anything.
Yes, and Mayor? Because I'm sure many of us got pictures from constituents who were testing at home and seeing a TDS level in the four hundreds or five hundreds and concerned for health risk. I mean, I had someone texting me that this is a five alarm fire, we need to get the word out. But you're telling me that over the last three years, the average in our city's been in the?
Five to seven hundred.
Five hundred to seven hundred. I don't think anybody was, well, may, I mean, maybe there's some people aware of that. But I mean, it definitely hasn't been advertised, not that we should be advertising that. But you're saying to an extent it's related to, I mean, the water coming from the river.
That's the background of our water system.
You know, people, of course, will check their water compared to Aquafina bottle and it's, you know, twenty. But all of this coinciding with that smell from the algae that you were talking about, more people were testing probably than usual. So there was a correlation causation, can, you know, question come up. I just, I, I don't want necessarily to be, I don't advertising, oh, our city, our city water's always TDS of this high. But if that's the truth, then it needs to be, you know, said so that people don't think. Because for example, if the taste was off, it wasn't necessarily because of the TDS levels.
Completely, yes, of course. They're not, they're not related.
So the algae that you're referring to does not contribute to rising TDS?
Absolutely not. It's a highly soluble compound. It, you know, I, when I use the same water and put it in, into a filter there, carbon filter at home, it's exactly as the bottled water that I buy from anywhere. So it doesn't have to do, just if you live in a, in an area where you are in a fresh area, like you got a hundred, you will feel a little bit of that. But it's not something, you know, really that makes any difference because of the odor or taste. They're completely separate issues.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you for that explanation. So what is the range that is safe for TDS?
You can drink up to nine hundred. It's, it's not, there is, there is no safety limit. EPA and D C Q has no limits, you know. It's just, you can drink fresh water or almost brackish. It depends on human, you know, capacity and tolerance for, for water there. But we would say around six hundred to seven hundred, you probably can, okay. But then when you hit a thousand and twelve hundred, you will start to feel, you can't wash with it. There is hardness, there is issues and.
So there's no health risk?
No health risk whatsoever.
Okay.
No health, you know, it's just gonna, if you have calcium, magnesium, and they're just gonna create hardness issues, you know, washer and machine and so on.
Does, does our water treatment try to mediate the, the higher TDS?
The only way you can remove salinity from any plant is use R O systems. Reverse system is the Cadillac version of any plant. You rarely use it because of the size of quantity that you use.
So is total dissolved solids that include salt?
It's the salt. It's, it's salt is not sodium chloride. So it could be calcium, magnesium, any, any minerals on, in air, on earth, they're dissolved in a certain, you know, state. And that's what we call salts. Sodium chloride is one of them, but it's not the main culprit in the high TDS. It's just water go through rocks, limestone rocks and just dissolve that and it's part of the chemical composition of the water we have here. Some people use softeners to remove that as well.
So when you say that five hundred is the recommended, you mean the aesthetic part?
Correct.
Five hundred is the goal or?
The perfect, you know, if you get around five hundred, below that, you're, you're, you're great, you know, you're good.
But having the five hundred to seven hundred range is completely safe?
Hundred percent.
And, and somewhat expected because of where we live?
That's exactly, we're downstream. If you live closer to the upstream, to the Colorado River, you might be into two hundred. If you are close to a pristine lake, you might get seventy milligram per liter. So the more you get to the source, with less, less, you know, contact time with the rocks. And anything else that gets, you know, dumped into the rivers, you will have way better systems in place.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is ninety, ninety-two. Item ninety-two, we're getting there.
Oh, okay, okay.
That was it. We can go back to the consent agenda.
All right. So we already covered ninety-two.
Are we on thirty-eight?
Consent agenda.
Thirty-four, I think. Thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight.
Okay. Thirty-eight. So thirty-eight is mine. So just want to make a comment to staff. I just want to thank you all, give you all kudos for working this out because them giving us a donation of six hundred eighty thousand dollar piece of property. It's just phenomenal when it comes to, and that just comes to show, showing the public how public and private partnerships are working out really, really well for us. They're on McPherson and Jackman, they wanted to donate that land to us if Murphy's comes through with everything that, that they wanted to propose there for us. So just want to give you all a huge thanks and of course, let people know that we are taking care of five major issues when it comes to that particular project. Access to property, the city's had for over ten years, parking inside the neighborhood, traffic pattern improvements at Jackman and McPherson, a new park facility with a host of possibilities. We're hoping to do a lot of things with that particular property. And lastly, of course, new business adding to our, our tax base, which is phenomenal for the city of Laredo. So to staff, just thank you so much for working with this. I know you all did plenty of, a lot of people did. And it's just showing the community how private and public partnerships are working fantastic for the city of Laredo. So just thank you all so much for that.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I put the other side as you? So what is the partnership? Why is, is, does Murphy Oil own the land?
They, they will. With the purchase, yes ma'am. With the purchase of it, they will own that land as well and they donate to us because they only need that portion on the north, northwest side. I'm sorry.
So they, they are existing landowners there?
No, well, they're working the deal out still to purchase it. It looks like it already went through. So as soon as that goes through and we give them the permits, of course, to build their gas station that they want to build there at the corner of Fenwick and McPherson. Then that land next to it where the Home Run Derby was before?
Yes.
That's gonna be purchased with that as well and that'll be donated to us. And that's right behind Community Field, right behind in Del Mar Sea. So it's gonna be wonderful, of course, connect us. We already have a sliver of property there as far as the city's concerned. So adding that to it's gonna work really, really well for us.
And then, so the, the exchange or our participation is the fifty thousand dollars in traffic improvement?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That, that wasn't clear, management from, from the item. And that was just a little bit of confusion, but thank you.
Mayor, there's, there's a building. Sorry.
There's a building that comes with that.
That comes with it also as well. Yes, sir.
Motion to approve? Motion, second, all in favor? Opposed, motion passed. Next item?
Forty-five, Mayor.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven and forty-eight, or similar concerns that I had with the economic development policies. Same thing, I, I didn't get the policies for these specific policies. So I just, again, don't want to approve a resolution without the policy.
So the policy is embedded with the resolution. So if you read the resolution, there's portions of that policy in there.
Okay, well, I understand. I did kind of see that, but I think a policy should be on its, separate on its own.
Mayor, if it's acceptable, I would like to follow the same format to maybe table for tonight, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight. Maybe bring them on to Tuesday's workshop shop. That'll give everybody, will stem out a little bit more information to make sure everybody understands what's in there and where, where it's all at. And then if, if that's acceptable, Mayor, put him in.
Yeah, Mayor, I just think that a resolution is one thing and a policy is another. A policy should have all the specifics laid out. Resolution's just a general statement of approval from us. So I'd like to table for, for follow-up pending the, providing us the actual policies.
Motion and second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passed. Seventy-two. Let's go to seventy-two. We didn't have fifty-eight? We didn't call that fifty-eight? Nobody called it fifty-eight? No, okay, seventy, okay. Seventy-two. Seventy-two.
Mr. Adam Zavet, sorry to bring you back. Authorizing the city manager to award a contract for the Sombra Retiro twelve inch force main project and the Pan American Lift Station Elimination Project to the sole bill bidder, this construction company of El Paso, Texas, in the amount of five million, two hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars for the provision of all necessary machinery, equipment, labor, supervision and related pertinences required for the projects. And then the funding is available in twenty twenty-four sewer revenue bond. And my question simply is what projects are you considering for this five million dollars?
Thank you for the question. So this is really Department of Transportation, Texas State Department, is now working on expanding the Mines Road. And therefore, our existing sewer line has to be moved out of that area. And for, therefore, we need to move that and that's part of the coast. But there is also an old lifting station that is, they're probably thirty years old. So we want to also remove that completely. So this bit is really, part of it is to move the sewer line and also completely eliminate that old lifting station.
Okay, and, and the funding's already been secured?
Correct.
I know, you know, previously, previous to you and, and our previous director, actually, there was discussion about how these, the, the projects that we have to do for street removal and repair and expansion, that we end up using funds that were dedicated for our own improvement on streets. And, and then so we're draining our city budget. But are, was this, was the funding acquired for this particular project from a, a fund that is dedicated for utility work on transportation projects?
Don't think so, honestly, but I, I don't know the answer. I need to go back and check. But I don't, I don't think the case because the ones you're talking about, we just met with the US Department of Transportation on the bridge expansion piece. And that's a different fund that was allocated to that. That is not related to that piece. But I, I'm not sure, so I can, I can verify that maybe in.
Well, and, and perhaps this is more to management. So just, just so that we're not draining funds from our utility department that need to be used for the, the water infrastructure and all those projects. And the street improvement projects, we're just cognizant of, of where those funds come from. And we're planning so that we can do both. So that we can continue with, you know, dealing with the expansion of our streets and improving our streets, but also not drawing down so much from those funds that are necessary for the water infrastructure projects that we absolutely need because of our aging infrastructure. Thank you.
All right.
Uh, move to approve.
Second, motion second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passed. Eighty-five. Let's go to eighty-five. Let's see. All done on that one? Eighty-five is a request for executive session. Under Taxary Government Code, personal matters to discuss city manager performance evaluation of the city attorney and to authorize a four, four percent annual merit increase to the city attorney's base salary, effective as of the anniversary date of June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. And according to the terms of the employment agreement with an effective date of implementation and other matters incident there too. Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passed. Executive session. Back to regular session, it's ten twenty-eight PM. Back from executive, no decision working.
Mayor, I'd, I'd like to move that we continue with the terms of the employment agreement as discussed and move forward.
Second.
Direct manager to move.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passed.
Mayor, motion extend meeting to eleven?
Motion? Second, all in favor? Motion passed.
Mayor, motion to recess as a Laredo City Council and convene as a Laredo Mass Transit Board.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passed.
Mayor, motion to approve number eighty-six, eighty-seven and eighty-eight.
Motion, second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passed.
Motion to adjourn as a Laredo Mass Transit Board and convene, reconvene as a Laredo City Council.
Motion, motion second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passed. Ninety-three. All right. Okay, ninety-three.
Awesome, yes. So item ninety-three, this is something I've been thinking a lot about lately. Essentially, as, as we grow as a city, obviously, it's more responsibility, more streets to take care of. I live in, you know, my, the district that I represent is a newer district, one of the, where a lot of the newer developments have been made. And we see in developments that have been five or even less than five years old where the streets are already destroyed. And it's just something that's not sustainable if we're gonna keep growing like this. I mean, we have, for example, in San Isidro, east of Loop Twenty, near Academy in that area. This, I mean, it's a fifteen, twenty year old neighborhood or, or less, but the streets are just in, in disarray. And we know it's because of the type of soil that's, that's there in the PSI index. We know the spray irrigation system in the water that's just all over the street and the sinkholes that, that come from that. Waters, you know, excess water is one of the biggest enemies we have with our streets. And Mr. Orfila and Public Works are, you know, putting French drains. They're, they're literally going back retroactively and installing French drains into these streets. Now, the question comes up, okay, is that something the developer could do in advance? Or is it, if they do it, well, they really don't know exactly where the water's gonna, because of the water tables under the ground, it's kind of hard to know whether or not, where to put the French drains. So that's the side from the developer community. You, you always hear the city and the, and the development community kind of saying different things. So this proposal, which I think Councilman Gutiérrez and the Mayor Trevino for co-sponsoring, is to come up with, and I don't want to add another committee, we already have thirty-three committees. I was thinking of this as more of a task force or just a roundtable as a way to come up, get everybody in the room, you know, get the development community, the home building community in the same room with our city engineers, with our public works team, and come up with some ideas on common sense solutions that everyone can agree on for future development to prevent this. Because as we grow, it's just not sustainable. And I did mention a few things, like, you know, gradually shifting away from spray irrigation to drip irrigation, encouraging the use of zero escaping at the beginning. And I've already asked in the past for zero escaping credits from utilities. That's something Dr. Treck, I wanted to talk to him about as, as his new directorship. As we've asked, we've passed resolutions at this council to have rebates and coupons and credits for the use of zero escaping in people's yards or turf as a, as a way of not only water conservation, but for me, and for as particular to this item, is street preservation. And so it's something that I want us to come together and have a list. My goal from this is to create this roundtable of a variety of people to come up with, you know, five to ten common sense ideas that the city and, and development community agree that would, would be productive. Because of course, the developers are always gonna say, well, if you raise the cost of building a home, that raises the cost of the price of the home to the home buyer. Because they, you know, pass it on to them. So, so that's, that's the point of this, of this task force slash roundtable, hoping to come up with some common sense solutions to preserve our streets for the long term. Because what we have right now is not sustainable.
I'd like to second for discussion.
Got motion, second for discussion.
So I hope that in, in addition to the items that you've brought for Dr. King, there can also be contribution from our own city engineering department about the possibility of redoing the street ordinance and increasing the construction value of the street as was before. Now, I don't know if there is a direct line from the reduction of the standards for the streets to these problems that we're seeing in your neighborhood. to these problems that we're seeing in your neighborhoods. But I can tell you in District Three, I find the same issue that Dr. King finds in newer neighborhoods. These neighborhoods are only a few years old, and you can see the streets just falling apart, whether that's strictly a drainage issue or if it does play into this, the fact that in years past, those street standards were decreased. I'd like a realistic conversation to be included, and perhaps we look at increasing the standard to avoid this additional cost to the city. It's not a a true cost that the developer's taking on if just a few years down the road, the streets fail and the city has to come in and spend taxpayer dollars to get the streets fixed. So I I believe that if if that's the case, then it it should be a developer cost to make sure that the streets maintain a standard of ten years, fifteen years. Unfortunately, I'm not exactly sure what the limit is. But at least they meet a minimum standard that is acceptable to the people that move into these neighborhoods and have an expectation that they can leave their driveway and not fall into potholes just a couple of years out.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
On the same sentiment, Councilman, thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Chavez, hate to put you on the spot, but I know you were here. When did that ordinance take place where it started lessening the requirements to build streets in our city?
So this ordinance that you're referring to was amended in twenty-seventeen. Right now, we have a a proposed amendment that we're ready to present to Plan Zoning Commission on August seventh. So we have an amendment ready along with other recommendations. That's a directive that the city manager through council, and and I know that several of you had brought up.
Right.
So we're ready to present that on August seventh to the Plan Zoning Commission. And I think that'd be a good initiation of this conversation. I've already shared that amendment that we're proposing going back to the original standards to a group of developers and also the Laredo Buildings Association.
Okay.
So they are aware that that this is coming.
And this is an ordinance that we're going to bring back. Is it going to, go ahead and, we're going back to old standards? What was working for us? Because before, you had streets that were twenty-five, thirty years.
Right.
Hillside, for instance, right? I just resurfaced it, and the streets have been there for thirty-five, almost forty years. And we haven't had to resurface anything until recently, which in my district, we have another subdivision, which I don't want to mention the name, but it's literally existed for less than seven years, and I was having to repay it two years ago.
Right.
That makes no sense whatsoever. That's how bad our requirement to build those streets, that's how 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 less stringent that we've gotten over the course of several years. And it's having to cost the city, our taxpayers, more and more money. Not only are they paying for their new home, but their streets are in deplorable condition very, very quickly. And that just doesn't make sense whatsoever. So my question is, are we going back to the standard that it was before? Or are we making even more stringent than what it was then?
So we're looking at going to the previous standards prior to twenty-seventeen. I know that then there were some engineering studies that were done along some, with the payment standards, and and it's a huge formula that we utilize as engineers. But part of it has to do with traffic counts. And so with those traffic counts where they were lessened, that automatically looked into reducing that payment standard. So I know that's something that I've already received some comments that why are we going back? And and if we had already looked at this from the traffic count perspective. And so again, that's going to be part of the conversation. That's going to, that's going to happen.
Yes, another thing, when a developer's going in and purchasing these hundreds of acres of land to develop land, whatever them I purchase, I'm assuming they do soul studies, do they not?
Yes, sir, they do.
So in New Vision subdivision, the one in my district, in San Isidro, Dr. King's district, there's literally water running underneath the streets, literally water running in the street, and it's coming up from 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 the ground. How are we allowing developers to do this when we know the streets aren't going to last for three, four years max? And then we're having to redo it over and over again. Now, we're having issues in homes also, because there's water coming into homes over and over again. How is this happening in our city? Why aren't we stopping them from developing? If we see the soil test is coming with water underneath it, that makes no sense to me at all.
Well, sometimes, again, the soils are analyzed, and unless that's identified on the geotechnical report, as far as any, any groundwater that's been identified, then the engineer will look into it. But if if nothing is identified on those geotechnical reports, then we will will not include any of that.
And those geotechnical reports, do they go back several years, several days, a week? How far back did they go? Because I'm seeing this, and this is, these are subdivisions that are brand new.
Right, so the geotechnical reports are typically done at the, what we call the center line of the road. So they do it wherever that center line of that road is going to be, and that's where these geotechnical standards are applied.
And these geotechnical standards, they're contracted by the developer?
By the developer, yes, sir.
Okay. And are there, i- if the report came back negative, and we're seeing this a year later, is there some type of repercussion for these tests coming in or the people actually conducting these tests?
Yeah, the, the, I'm sorry. Yeah, right, yeah, so I lost mine. We're talking about the geotechnicals. Yeah, so unless that's identified on the report, then that's the only way we would apply.
Because you gentlemen have seen, because I've called you all multiple times about people complaining about water coming into their homes, in their yard, and this is a twenty-four, seven thing, it never dries up.
I know, I was, what I was going to mention up. So, I mean, there's, there may be several factors that come into play when once subdivisions developed, and now you have irrigation system. So naturally, the water's going to penetrate and and go under. And so as these areas get developed, that is a part of the points that Dr. Tyler King is bringing up with all this, and maybe perhaps applying zero escaping and all that kind of stuff. And and I know we have ordinance already in place, and maybe that'll be part of the discussion as well, to where the, these irrigation systems have to be so far from the actual property line so that they don't come onto the street. But that, then you get into the enforcement issue of seeing where these are installed and all that.
Thank you, Chavez.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just have a question, Mr. Chavez. If if the city were just to be able to snap their fingers and all irrigation systems went away and every home just went into zero escaping like that, would would that basically stop the problem? In the sense that if there's no water leaking on the streets? Like, for me, I'm just asking you, regardless of how thick the asphalt is, my thinking is, if we stop the water from dripping, getting on the streets, we don't have an issue. But tell me, tell me.
In in my opinion, it is going to minimize it, yes. It will be reduced, in my opinion.
Just, I mean, just the thought of like, Arizona, for example, obviously a lot drier than. Arizona, it's zero escaping for the whole state. They don't even allow irrigation systems. And I'm not saying we're there yet, maybe, but maybe we are. I mean, it's just something to think about for that, you know, for the future home developments to just think about zero escaping as a as a as an alternative to just, because we know that, like, if we're adding costs back on, then there's also the adding cost to the home buyer. So I'm just thinking, you know, this, and you're mentioning August seventh, and my my only concern about that is that it's, and it says that you you have let the community know, but it, my main goal with this item was that we have this coming of the minds, almost like a come to Jesus meeting, so to speak, where we all are in a room and we're saying, okay, showing them, showing pictures of brand-new subdivisions and how it is, and saying, look, this is not acceptable. What are your ideas?
Right.
What are your ideas from preventing this from happening? That's, I want to put it on that community to say, okay, this is our problem. We want to prevent this neighborhood of three years old from looking, having the streets look like this. How do we do that?
Sure.
What are your ideas to prevent your subdivision that you just developed three years ago? What are your ideas for preventing that from happening? And so that that way, it's a it's a two-way street and not just us bringing a new ordinance and slamming it down people's throats as to say, hey, like, more of as a collaborative effort, if if you're willing to pursue a strategy like that instead of, you know, just us saying, okay, this is what we're doing, you know. But and maybe we still end up coming to the same conclusion as what you already have coming up, but just, that was just my thought, but.
Sure, and that's a part of of council, then we can definitely do that. Again, we do have recommendations on that amendment that we can certainly discuss. And we do have all those reports at the engineering department with pictures, images of all these locations, because right now, and 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 we're we're being challenged is that, and and that's maybe another, it's related, but it's related to the to the acceptance of the subdivision and the warranty. So every time we go out there and do a warranty, over time, we have not had any funds to where we can apply those to the warranty. And so those are things that we're recommending as well.
So Mayor, my motion is that we, before we move forward with that ordinance change, that we have a roundtable discussion with all parties deemed by city management for come up with a list of ideas for how we can collaborate on ways to improve that ordinance. And then eventually, in a timely manner, bring back an ordinance change to address this.
Second, Mayor.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Thank you very much. Okay, and then the next one, it's just ninety-four. Now, I I think, I know we got sixteen minutes left. I know the Count, Mayor Posimera, and I have a lot of thoughts on this, and it's a, it's take a while. But the idea here is that this is about city online payment systems, not just online payment systems, but just in general, our online experience, right? So one of the big things, and I know we have parks here as well as additional IT, you know, every month, you get complaints about, you know, for example, the the online reservations or, you know, for example, reserving a lap at the swimming pool, okay? That's just, people are waiting up until midnight, and then the system crashes, and they're up at three A.M. trying to reserve their spot for, so. So it's just, that's a very simple and basic thing. But then also, like, you can't pay certain things online. You you have to, it's cash only in certain places, like, you know, the library or in other in other departments. Like, why can our city not be universally paying for things with credit card, with Apple Pay, et cetera? And just, what's the holdup? What do we need from IT? And I see you here.
So, so good evening, Mayor, City Council, Joe Rivera, IT Director for the for the record. Yeah, so I I believe we've had a cursory discussion about this prior. Last time this was up, brought up, I mentioned that as an IT department, we had already identified this as as a as a as a project for the city. So if you, if I may, I'll try to go through these slides as quickly as possible. So I did bring this to 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 the team sometime last year, again, prior to our conversation here. And the goal was, that I presented to my team, was I wanted us to create a centralized, uniform payment experience for the city, citizens of the of the community. And so we have, I I can assure you, we have continued to work on this, on this project. We we have two, it's twofold. We've been working on on a payment portal that's web-based, but we're also been working on a mobile utilities app, and I mentioned that last time as well. The project to bring a web portal to a payment portal, if you will, to to the city, as we've continued our work through that, has become a bigger project than, and the scope of it has been bigger than we initially expected. I'll I'll show you a couple of screens real quick. I know we're we're limited time, but we, these are some mockups of what it could potentially look like. Obviously, a page on our on our on our on our website that allows us to do register and and then allows, once registered, you can go on and 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 select a city service that you would pay for that service, right? The the challenge here is that we're talking about a lot of different departments, different workflows, different processes, different services that are going to be paid. And in some cases, even different systems that they're already using to maintain their user base, to maintain the the data that runs their operations. So, for example, Parks and Rec is little due to the community of housing, or the bridge system. And so this illustrates at at a high level some of the departments that we're talking about. And these these departments are already using things like Rec Pro and Parks and Rec, Pep Point, this is software, by the way, Pep Point and Animal Control, Sterling Enterprises Cemetery, the Tyler System and Municipal Court. And again, these have really no connection to one another. So what we're trying to do when we're trying to build a payment portal is we're trying to combine all these different systems, different processes into one portal that allows us to do this. Furthermore, we're also trying to make sure that these transactions that are entered and or transacted through the portal flow into the city's Navoline financial system. Because if we don't do that, we're going to create a lot of manual reconciliation, manual processes, not only for the departments, but for the for the for the finance department. So this is one of our biggest challenges, we're getting there. We do have some additional challenges. I'll try to go quickly through these. We did have issues in the last, as we continue to try to accomplish this, we did have issues with integrating to that financial system that I was talking about. This actually has delayed us by many months. We've made some progress, but this is something that every time we try to bring a service up and again, integrate into those different systems, it's a potential repeat. We, one of the things I wanted to point out, we, as a city, we, and as I, an IT department for the city, we don't have in-house programming. Over the course of the last year and nine months since I joined the team, I've had directors come to me and say, hey, you know, there's a, there's some function on a website in another city that we'd like to mimic. And I do reach out to those other cities and and department IT directors to find out how they got there. And more often than not, they're using in-house developers, which, again, we don't have. So we're counting on vendors to help us through this process. We had been working, we have been working with one vendor since last year on this. And we we've recently become aware of another vendor that that has a good potential to help us out here. So the only thing is that this has set us back, because we're now kind of reevaluating where we are with what vendor we're going to choose to get where we want to be with this with this solution. So that is a a challenge. I I won't go into all of this, but, you know, IT, we have a lot of responsibility across the city. We support every department in the in the city. It'd be hard, I think any department would be hard for us to get their function done if they do not have IT. So we have, we're often putting out fires and working a lot of daily operational tasks that do do stretch us out a little bit. So that has been a challenge as well. I do want to mention, and I'll go down to the bottom of the slide, I do want to mention a couple long-term, a a couple of additional considerations. This is a long-term project. It is not possible for us to bring all these different disparate solutions and processes up all at once. So we will have to identify what is more pressing, what will make the biggest impact for the community, and 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 go and repeat the process. Sit with those departments, identify their processes, what their what their services are, how we will capture the information that we need to capture for those transactions, and get those get those developed. Obviously, there's budgetary cost for that as well, so we'll have to work through that. So what I'm asking for for the portal is that you let us, allow me to please work with the vendors that we're work, that we're currently considering, and come back to you within ninety days with a better plan of how we're going to get that, who we chose to to work with us on the payment portal, and 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 present a better plan and timeline around that. The good news is, if 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 I may, real quick, we do have the Utilities Mobile App about ready to go. And we're also thinking that we will launch this no later than ninety days out. But this is an actual screenshot from the, from what this looks like. As a matter of fact, I do have the app installed on my phone. We are testing.
Is that your credit card number?
No, it's not. This is all test data. So I, we are currently testing, we we transacted through the app, and we we successfully had payments cross over to our financial system. We we are still working on a couple tweaks with the interface. We are also working to make sure that we have reporting in place that will allow the the management team over the utility CSRs to reconcile transactions, to know what kind of activity and see trending reports. So we're still working on that as well. But as you can see here, you can see your payment, your amount dues, your your total to pay. You can pay with a credit card. A couple other screens here will show you some historical data. You can see the 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 latest bill date, the the current due date for that. If you're carrying a prior balance, current balance and total balance to be paid. Again, you can look at that historically. On the right side, you'll notice we have a payment history, so you can see when you paid and how much you paid prior bills. And one other thing that will, we can do through this is if 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 a customer has multiple properties, they can, under one login, manage multiple properties and pay for those properties independently of one another.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't want to cut you off, but you're showing us for like utilities, things that we already accept credit cards for and over the phone. I think the the intent is to expand this type of service beyond just water bill, to expand it on, you know, garage sale fees, fees for other, you know, if you're going to have a certain certain services that people can get from Health Department, from Building Department, if you're a builder, if you're a developer and you want to pay a a fee. Right now, some of these services, you have to come in person and pay.
Yes.
We're talking about the full range of services beyond just utilities, because utilities, people can already pay that over the phone. You want to renew your library card, you have to go in person. If you want to do certain things, you have to go in person. It's beyond just the utilities. That's that's my take on this item, and one of the reasons why I wanted to co-sponsor it is because it's not just utilities. We offer.
why I wanted to co-sponsor it is because it's not just utilities, we offer so many services, and it's always, people have to come in person, and right now, not everybody has a vehicle, gas is expensive, we have traffic, and it's hard for people to come to the office and do things in person, handwritten, in paper, pencil, for a lot of things. We want to bring everything up to date and make everything more accessible.
And, and I, and I agree with that, Councilwoman Perez, so, the reason we went to the Utilities Mobile App is because it's, it's our proof of concept. As I show in this screen here, you know, we do, we are aware of all these services that we do, and we do want to talk about, you know, again, I think I've got, you mentioned library, I've got them here, Police Department, Airport, City Secretary, Municipal Court, we are aware of all these services, and the goal is to get there, but it is a process. Again, we're talking about very disparate operations, and so, we're working our plan together. As I said, when we last talked, we, we had already identified this, but it has become a bigger monster of fuel to get there, and so, we are working towards that end, but we're trying to make sure that we're partnering with the right vendor to get there.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to emphasize that we're talking about the user experience, right?
Right.
And a lot of our constituents are frustrated, and in today's day and age, I understand that we have technical, logistical issues with getting there, but the frustration is, is that we've had these conversations many times over the years in different ways, and we just need to be there, that's it.
Agreed, agreed.
And Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So, and I think you've heard, you know, mentioning the ninety days that you need to come back, but my thing is, in ninety days, it'll be in October, in the new fiscal year, we will have already had budget, so my concern is that you'll come back to us with vendors and, and costs, and it'll be after we've already just finished the budget, and then.
So, we can try to move that in, I, I, there, there obviously is a vetting process, and we want to, again, like I said, we want to ensure, we want to get the right vendor on the project. I, I want to make sure we're not setting up this up in favor.
Yeah, I'm not saying we should rush it, I'm saying that, are we going to just wait? If you come back in October with the vendor and the cost, is that, okay, well, we'll do it next year, and we'll have to wait a whole year to get things moving, it's kind of a management question as well, and then the other question is, why don't we have an in-house coder, you know, in-house programmer, like, is that something that should be budgeted for as well? Because if you're telling me you're reaching out to all these other cities, and they're saying, oh, yeah, our in-house programmer does it, and we don't have that.
So, so to that point, a lot of these communities that, that, that's the answer, are areas like San Antonio, Houston, Dallas, that are tech hubs, and so, that kind of expertise is readily available in the community, I think we'd be a little more hard-pressed to bring that down.
Do you need someone to work here in Laredo, Texas? Can they not work remotely?
Not necessarily, obviously, remote, remote, remote programming is a thing, so we could talk about that, but I also want to make sure that we have a team, this is, having one person on a project like this.
Yeah.
Is, is going to really put, make us hard-pressed to get this done in any kind of timely fashion.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you were done with the presentation, but.
Yeah, I mean.
I think that's, we got the idea, but.
Okay, okay.
I.
Any motions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to, I'd like if you could bring us a plan on how we can, you know, get this done and what the cost is going to be within the next, you know, if you can before the budget cycle, a rough estimate, and then we can work out the details later, but I think we would need to know kind of, at least tackling a few departments or a few of these issues, what's it going to cost to get there.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table my items ninety-five and ninety-six.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.